Deb? You ready? Read my script.
Good evening and welcome to the November 5th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting of Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the city clerk please help roll?
Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wezentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Well, first of all, it's great to have a full council tonight. It's been awhile, so. Super. So with that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion?
So move.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seeing none, we have an agenda. Great. Our first item of special, or first item of real business tonight then, is special business and is Agenda Bill AB 5494, our Veterans Day proclamation. For that, we welcome Assistant to the City Manager, Ally Speitz.
Good evening, Mayor Burtland, council, and community. Tonight, we have a proclamation celebrating Veterans Day in our country and in our community. I would like to ask the following veterans to please join me at the podium. Judy Hubbard, Air Force. Steve Majewski, Navy. Larry McWilliams, Army. Craig Weisen, Navy. Or Weisen, I'm sorry. Tom Koger, Marine Corps. And from our city staff, Officer Jennifer Franklin from the Police Department, Army. Alex Harvey from the Parks and Recreation Department, National Guard. And John Kim, if he's here. Oh, there he is, great. From Youth and Family Services, National Guard, active duty. And if there's any other veterans in the room that would like to join us, we'd love to have you up here. If not, we'll go with this group. So, in 1938, Congress made the 11th of November in each year a legal holiday, a day to be dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be thereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day, to mark the end of the hostilities of World War I that occurred at the 11th hour on the 11th day on the 11th month. In 1954, after World War II had required the greatest mobilization of soldiers, sailors, Marines, and airmen in the nation's history, Congress struck the word "armistice" and replaced it with "veterans." With approval of this legislation on June 1, 1954, November 11 became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. So I'd like to ask Mayor Burtland to read our proclamation.
So a tremendous warm welcome to those of you who were able to come out tonight and, of course, everyone who has served our country. Whereas veterans have bravely answered the call to serve and they've earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our country, whereas on Veterans Day, we honor all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, both in times of war and in times of peace. Whereas for nearly 100 years since the end of World War I, Veterans Day has given us a time to pay due respect to our veterans who have passed the torch of liberty from one generation to the next. Whereas with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, the Congress designated November 11th each year to be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. Whereas Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 5760 is a service organization for veterans residing in Mercer Island who have faithfully served our nation and embraced the current or the shared core values of the nation's armed forces: honor, courage, and commitment. Whereas the city of Mercer Island employs over 15 veterans with representation in each of the armed forces, including two active-duty National Guard military members. Now, therefore I, Debbie Burtland, Mayor of the city of Mercer Island, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2018, as Veterans Day in Mercer Island and encourage all residents to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans. Please join me in thanking our veterans and their families as we remember and honor their service and their sacrifice. Thank you. So I think I myself and council as a whole would love to hear from any of you who have any words that you'd like to share with the community. If you do, please step forward.
Well, for, on behalf of the commander of Mercer Island VFW post, we do appreciate being asked to come tonight and thank you for your proclamation. Thank you.
Because if I had the health of my youth, I can, I was pleased and honored to serve and I would do it again. One thing I would ask you to consider on the council is to return to the Pledge of Allegiance ahead of the meeting. The flag is, represents freedom and democracy. It also brings us all together as citizens and unity is something we're all looking for here and across the country. And so to be able to add that to the deliberations that, as you seek to set ordinances and rules and whatever, that look at what's common and what's best for the future and what's our hope.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We'd love to have you in front of the podium for a photo.
Sure.
You're gonna go in front. You cover up this lovely piece of furniture. Again, thank you very much. So again, a final thank you to our veterans this evening. Next up on the agenda, we have the City Manager's report and for that, I welcome City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council. The city's annual fall recycling collection event that took place on October 27th was once again a great success with very impressive results. The city's contractor reported 573 vehicles coming through carrying a total of 58,301 pounds of discarded material and that averages to about 102 pounds each. We want to thank everyone who donated to the YFS Food Pantry. Attendees donated 35 bags of grocery items and approximately $2,100 in cash. And our next recycling event will take place in the spring and you can learn more about our curbside recycling or other options at mercergov.org/recycle. Congratulations to our newest CERT grads. So CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. The training is an eight-unit program that teaches residents basic skills to prepare for, respond to, and recover from a disaster. Units included fire safety, disaster medical, search and rescue, terrorism, and more. Over 650 residents across the island volunteer in one capacity or another with our emergency preparedness programs. Of those who volunteer, around 145 are certified members of our CERT team. So we want to thank all of our volunteers and if anyone is interested in learning more about our CERT program, please reach out to Officer Jennifer Franklin. Two of the city's first and last mile solution pilot programs wrapped up in October and it's time for us to get your feedback. The city's popular six-month rideshare pilot program delivered about 5,000 rides and approximately 500 users tried the service at least once. Over the summer, the city ran a three-month bike-share pilot program in which 25 electric-assist bicycles were distributed across the island. Over 1,200 riders took approximately 4,100 rides totaling almost, this is astounding, 4,000 miles. Isn't that something? Yeah. We are analyzing rider data and seeking community input on both programs to help guide next steps, which the city council will evaluate on November 20th. The city continues to seek, of course, additional partnerships to leverage settlement funds intended to provide other first and last mile solutions. Just to remind you, none of these programs were paid for by city funds, rather, they were paid for by Sound Transit. So please visit the city's website to take the two surveys. So one is dedicated to the rideshare pilot and one is dedicated to the bike-share pilot. Really excited that we had over 100 people attend the city's open house on October 22nd showcasing conceptual proposals and qualifications from five semifinalists competing to deliver a proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project in town center. We've narrowed the two finalists to Main Street Property Group and Shelter Holding Weinstein AU. Both teams are composed of strong, well-qualified consultant teams with a proven track record. So initial design concepts from the finalists included space for the Mercer Island Center for the Arts as well as significant parking, up to 150 parking spaces for the future commuter parking facility. Concepts from the community are continued, we continue to seek comments from the community on our public engagement website and the council is scheduled to meet the two finalists on Monday, November 26. Don't forget to vote. I'm sure you've probably seen all the signs out there. But new this year is no stamp is required, so just drop your prepaid ballot at the post office by 5:00 PM or you may drop it in the ballot drop box that is located at the community center by 8:00 PM tomorrow. Want to invite members of the community, our senior members of the community, to the annual Thanksgiving Senior Lunch. It will take place on Thursday, November 8 at 12:00 PM at the community center. The fee is $5.50 per person. Of course, we'll have, you know, the traditional Thanksgiving meal, turkey and all the trimmings. Transportation is available, so please call 206-275-7609 to reserve your spot and to arrange for transportation. We have our next volunteer restoration event on Saturday, November 10th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This will be at Pioneer Park, so meet at the corner at 84th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 68. It's a planting event, so if you're interested and can register in advance, that would be great. This is being coordinated by EarthCore. On Monday, November 12th at 9:00 AM, we will be hosting at the thrift store, the annual holiday showcase. This is a 30% discount storewide, so be sure to come out for this event. We'll have refreshments and, of course, all proceeds benefit YFS. And just want to remind you that in observance of Veterans Day, city facilities will be closed on Monday, November 12th. And that's all I have.
Great, well, thank you. So next on our, on our agenda is appearances and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item. And as it is election season, we have 24 hours left, but it is still election season, so please do be reminded that state law generally prohibits the use of city facilities for campaign-related purposes with some limited exceptions. So accordingly, we do ask that you not make campaign-related comments during this time. When it is your turn to address council, please be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone and limit your time to three minutes. So that, welcome.
Hello, council. My name is Mark Kurayama. I live at 7800 Southeast 27th Street. Which is the condo next to the plot of land that the city is proposing for the commuter parking and mixed-use project that City Manager Underwood mentioned. I'm a little nervous. I don't do much public speaking, so I just wrote down everything I want to say. I'm over the weekend, I'm just going to read my statement. I'm here to speak in support of the commuter parking and mixed-use development project. I think it's important for the community to get its 100 additional parking spaces for commuters. And personally, I think it's a good opportunity for MICA, which has my personal support for being part of this project. I appreciate the public process the city is using for this project and I plan to be involved with every phase of it, particularly the design of the building and during construction. I'd like to reiterate the invitation that I sent about two weeks ago to members of this council and to the planning commission to come and visit 7800 Plaza condos. I'd like to feel confident that the individuals who are actually deciding on what is built for this project are able to personally visualize the impact of the different design options that are being considered. So far, we've had two council members, one planning commission member, and one RFQ finalist visit our building. The second RFQ finalist is scheduled to visit this Wednesday, November 7th, and we hope to see more members of the council visit soon. Now, I'm also here to speak in opposition to Amendment 15 of the comprehensive plan as it's currently written, in large part because it allows for above-ground commercial and residential development on public park space. As I'm sure you're aware, parcel 12, which is the city and state-owned parcel of land that is part of the commuter parking project, is a component of Aubrey Davis Park. Now, I understand that on the surface, it may seem strange or even contradictory that I support the commuter parking project but oppose Amendment 15, so I want to be clear about the key point of my position. I oppose Amendment 15 as it's currently written. What I mean by currently written is that I believe Amendment 15 can be modified slightly to allow for a fully viable commuter parking development project. I feel that a modified Amendment 15 can still meet the primary requirement of 100 commuter parking spaces and also meet the community desires for retail affordable residential housing in MICA and can address the communities and neighborhoods' concerns by avoiding above-ground commercial and residential development on public park space. As you may recall, Amendment 15 was added very late to the docket of 14 other comprehensive plan amendments earlier this year and because of this, I feel it was rushed through the process without full consideration of alternatives. I'd very much, I would very much like to have had the opportunity to provide my input to the planning commission about Amendment 15 and the associated zoning change, however, I never received notification of these proposals and I personally did not associate, and I personally did not become aware of them until just before the planning commission's vote on September 5th. And I feel I wasn't given adequate time, which is why I'm appearing before you.
I am going to ask you to.
Okay. I have more to read, but I'll send an email summarizing, including the stuff that I have. And again, I'd like to reiterate the invitation to come visit our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. All right, seeing none, appearances is closed. Next item of business is the consent calendar, which includes payables, payroll, minutes of October 16, 2018 regular meeting, and October 23, 2018 special meeting, and AB 5495, the Code of Ethics, second reading and adoption.
I would ask to remove AB 5495 from the consent calendar and would move to accept the consent calendar as modified. So I got.
All right, so first and second. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So move.
Yeah. I sort of did both. I tried.
Yeah. All in favor of the consent calendar as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so Bruce, do you want to speak to the Code of Ethics?
Yes, I do. So first of all, my apologies for coming to this at the second reading rather than the first. I have the luxury of being away and floating down a river when you were considering this and so was.
Just keep rubbing it in.
Yeah, absent from that discussion and so my apologies.
That's not what I was doing.
Yes, I understand you were having less fun than I was having. So I am going to point your attention to the last page of the agenda bill and it's the sixth section, sixth paragraph, which begins investments in conflict with official duties and then to the last sentence and the last phrase of that, which, I'll read the whole sentence, says, "Officials shall take proactive steps to disclose all relevant information and refrain from participating in any city business or activity related to the conflict." And in reading this, I came to the opinion that this last phrase might be overly constraining on folks. And the situation that has come up in the past and that might well come up again would be one where, for instance, we are asking a task force to consider changes to our town center. And in something like that, we would almost certainly want to have the participation of those who had a stake in town center, so those who are building owners. And the way this is phrased appears to me to preclude anyone in that situation from actually participating in something like a task force. Now, to be clear, I've bounced this off of both the city manager and the city attorney and both felt, nah, you're, this is, you may be reading this too narrowly and I certainly am respectful of that, of that view. But it does give me a little bit of pause in talking to the mayor about this. I then arrived at that I'd like to at least raise the question with the council because, and see if there was any, first of all, is there any sense that that, that makes sense? And then second, even if it is, the will of the council to just leave it as is, which would be fine, is there, it would be probably good to at least have this conversation so that it's on record that we are not trying to necessarily exclude those who have an interest in something from even being able to participate in the, in the conversation about it. So with that, what I would suggest, and I'll just offer it as a motion, we'll just see where it goes, I would move to strike the last phrase, so from the word "and refrain", and so I would move to strike "and refrain from participating in any city business or activity related to the conflict" from that, from that phrase.
Julie or Carrie, did you want to comment at all?
Let me see if there's a second first before they do that.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, so moved and seconded then.
Stop has no opinion. Good, Benson?
Well, can I ask the question maybe to the city manager and the city attorney? So if somebody has a conflict, they've made proactive steps to disclose, so now they've disclosed the conflict. The language that's being deleted or the suggested deletion has a follow-up step after the disclosure, so without it, what happens now? Person's made the disclosure, what happens?
The way I would understand it, I mean typically, we discuss this and typically you would see coming before advisory bodies like yourselves legislative decisions. And so generally speaking, legislative decisions tend to impact everyone. And so there's not one carve-out specifically for somebody versus, say, a quasi-judicial matter like a rezone. That would be a direct conflict if that person who's serving on the planning commission is advocating for a rezone of their property versus, say, a comp plan amendment that affects multiple properties. See the difference? And so you'd want, obviously, the person who has the direct conflict because they have the direct potential benefit to not participate in that decision-making process.
Saleem?
So maybe if any is too broad, might I suggest that we say "that portion of," so that somebody that was proactive, didn't have an investment, disclosed, but is participating, just step back from that portion of. Because we know, for example, town center, it could be a wide-ranging discussion and if somebody had a conflict with just a small portion of it, like, for example, they were on the Arts Council, I don't know, they'd just step back from that portion instead of "if any." So that would be my amendment to the amendment if we were going to go there.
So let me just offer that.
I think Carrie was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Carrie, did you want to jump in?
I was just going to add to what the city manager was saying with regard to commissions, boards, and task force that this would apply to typically would be in an advisory capacity and they'd be making a recommendation and not actually the ultimate final decision-maker. And so it's really in that legislative capacity that they are making a recommendation and they are not acting in a quasi-judicial manner. Why that's important is because the appearance of fairness doctrine does not apply, which the appearance of fairness doctrine goes further and does suggest recusal if you have a direct material conflict of interest. So I don't see that issue coming into play and overall, I just think it's really great that the council is proactively looking at implementing a code of ethics. Obviously, we haven't had one and we recommend highly to have one and I don't want to get hung up on this fine point. I think it is a fine point in the grand scheme.
Saleem? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it was Bruce. I'm sorry.
Yeah, back to me. So, you know, that's fine. I think there's a, there's a distinction between a task force where we've asked people to give input to us and the council, where the council ultimately is the deciding body around the kind of thing that might happen. But this, as phrased right now, it seems to me would preclude that task force member from participating. And that, it seemed, and because they're not even a deciding body, they're presumably a recommending body, it again feels a little bit over-prescriptive in what it's, in what it's doing to the, to the flexibility of folks to be able to participate. Clearly, they have to disclose. There's, I mean, state law in many ways is clear about that and this is, is clear about that and I would not want to change that aspect of it. I'm only suggesting that, that, that being essentially precluded from participating feels like it's gone a step further and is changing the, sort of the nature of the, of the situation.
And I'm just saying, the reason that I've supported this, I think, is much to what Bruce has just alluded to and it's that, that loose and vague concept of participating, the extent to which there's a task force, the extent to which there's a board or a commission, the extent to which somebody, I live on the edge of town center, does that therefore, so the line becomes somewhat subjective and I would not want to see us de facto excluding any person from participating in any form of the city government based on, you know, a potential conflict. As long as, yes, they are required to disclose it and then there is, you know, there are other steps, there are other parameters, there's other guidelines that are going to actually determine whether or not they should recuse themselves or not. So I'm, I'm open to a further amendment of it, but equally, I would like to see this at a minimum amended, if not then just removed. Saleem, did you?
Well, then I would just again reiterate that, that portion of in replacement of "in any," to me, seems a reasonable place to. in any, to me, seems a reasonable place to, to clarify that it, it still allows participation in the process and encourages to step back from that specific conflict.
Are you suggesting? Are you, are you suggesting that there be a different amendment to this statement, or?
So, the current amendment is to strike the sentence beginning at "and." My amendment would be to keep the sentence at "and," and so it would continue "and refrain from participating in that portion of city business or activity related to the conflict," so that it's clear that it's inclusionary. You disclose, you take the steps, you still can participate, but your, the obligation is to step back from that portion.
Counsel, is there any further comment? Wendy? Wendy, then Benson.
I like Saleem's amendment more than removing the whole phrase, because if you cut it off where Bruce recommends, it reads to me that we shall not invest or hold any investment. It seems to me it's more exclusionary, whereas Saleem's kind of qualifies the inclusion and where you can recuse yourself where there is some sort of conflict.
Benson?
Yeah, I'm actually going to support deputy mayor's recommended amendment to the amendment. I, I understood what the city attorney and what the city manager said. I, I still have a little uneasiness about the fact that there is a, you make the relevant disclosure, and I'm still sort of not quite sure what happens after that, and so, and clearly, if there's a direct conflict, yes, you have to recuse yourself, but there's all this kind of wiggle room that I'm not sure about. And so, I think this language, this sort of compromise, sort of focuses on that, that portion or that area where there may be a potential for a direct, direct conflict and leaves open what council member Basset wants to do, which is to make sure that people have an opportunity to participate. And so, I, I will, I know deputy mayor's amendment is not on the, on the table. We only have the other amendment.
Not yet.
So, we have, yeah, so anyway.
Dave, did you want to weigh in at all? Bruce?
Okay, I, I don't want to take us down a rathole on this, but my sense would have been that, that the deputy mayor's motion or suggested change really would keep the original intent intact. And because I'm, you know, I'm not wedded to this in any way, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I don't think it materially changes what's there. So, it's, but that's fine. I mean, we've had, I just wanted to have the conversation about it and make sure that it was, it was clear that there was an intent not to preclude people entirely from participating in things, because I think that would be deleterious to the, to the cause. So, you know, to, to my mind, that's successful. We've, we've done that. Whether we, whether we adopt it with that portion of, or leave it alone, or strike it entirely, I'm, I'm fine in, in any of those routes.
Yeah, I'm going to just comment, because when Bruce and I spoke about it, to me, one of the most important parts was that it be surfaced, because I certainly wouldn't want somebody to go read it two months, three months, six months from now, or even three years from now, and wonder what was the intent. So, the fact that we've actually had the conversation, that people can refer back to this, you know, as public record, is, to me, one of the most important parts of this discussion. So, why don't we go ahead and vote on the amendment? I'm guessing that we're going to vote it down and then probably have a new amendment suggested. So, all in favor of the First Amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All in, all against?
Nay.
Nay. All right, so motion doesn't pass, or the amendment does not pass. Saleem, did you want to?
So, I'll make a motion. Am I amending the amendment, or this time I'm just back to the original? So, I amend the original.
You've got a clean sheet of paper.
Okay, so I'll move to amend the motion to change in any to that portion of.
So, the "and refrain from participating in that portion of any city business or activity related to the conflict?"
It would read, refrain from participating in that portion of city business or activity related to the conflict.
So, striking any?
Yes. I need a second.
So, first and second, anybody want to have any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Amendment passes. So, now we got a vote.
So, yeah, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 18C-15, creating a new chapter 2.60 MICC Code of Ethics, and pass resolution number 1548, adopting a Code of Ethics statement as amended. Second.
So, first and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Great. So, with that, we move on to regular business, and the first item is AB 5497, the 2019-2020 proposed budget, the capital improvement program review. And for that, we welcome Chip and the finance team. I'm looking at the number of seats we have.
Mayor, if you can indulge me just a quick second here, I just want to recognize Francie. Today, she celebrates 35 years at the City of Mercer Island. She started when she was 15. Thank you, Francie, for all your loyal and dedicated service. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I mean, it is super impressive, and I'm so sorry that you're celebrating it here tonight with us.
Okay, folks, welcome to a continuation of the budget review process. We'll be focusing on your CIP, which is a six-year program, but in particular, the two-year portion of the capital budget portion of, of the six-year CIP. Your agenda is before you here. Francie will quickly review CIP revenue sources very quickly. I'll do it by fund, and Francie will update you on the REIT forecast and utility rate recommendations per the utility board and per staff. Then we'll quickly go over the CIP, give you a summarized review, 30,000-foot review in terms of the six-year plan by project category, by funding status. Well, then we'll boil it down to the capital budget 19 and 20 by project, project category and funding status, and then show you the projected ending fund balances for the six-year period for the, the capital-related funds. Then we'll get into the meat of this, which is really about the, the project review by category for 19 and 20. That's where we'll spend most of our time. I'll quickly update you, as we did two years ago, on where our outstanding bonds are at and when they end. And then, the one capital budget policy change, which I noted in your agenda bill. And finally, we'll just touch base with the council, or any additional information the council wants when we get back together on the 20th, or any specific direction. Okay, revenue sources. So, I'll just hit four funds or groups of funds real quickly, and I've just listed these from highest to lowest, the street fund. This is about your street projects, pedestrian bicycle facilities, and any parking-related stuff. REIT is your largest funding source. The projection for 19 and 20 is 1.8 million a year. After that is fuel tax, just under half a million dollars a year, then vehicle license fees, $375,000 a year. Sound transit mitigation, what's budgeted, is about $338,000 a year. Impact fees, transportation impact fees, 61K a year, and then the state shared revenue source multimodal transportation fees, $34,000 a year. Those are the major revenue sources there. Capital Improvement Fund. This funds your parks and open space capital projects, as well as your public building capital projects. REIT is the biggest funding source there, 2.2 million a year. Interfund transfers. What that is, is the utility funds transfer in money, roughly about half of that amount, actually, to fund repairs to the maintenance building. Okay, planned in 19 and 20. The other half comes from the Youth and Family Services Fund for thrift shop plant repairs. We have our 15-year Mercer Island Parks levy, right? And that ends last year's 2023 for that levy. $252,000 a year is dedicated to various capital projects, open space vegetation management in particular. Grants, $190,000 in 2019, private contributions of 171 in 2020. That's tied to Island Crest Park Southfield Project. We have King County, that's a six-year Parks levy. It's last year, expires at the end of 2019, so we have $105,000 that we are, should be receiving next year. And then finally, impact fees, park impact fees at $31,000 a year. Those are your major revenue sources. Looking at Technology and Equipment Fund. So, this is primarily funded by interfund transfers. As you'll, will recall, the general fund budget's $250,000 a year of general tax support. It gets transferred to this fund, and it's just for general technology and equipment needs. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. In addition, we have some money that comes from the general fund for the community center sinking fund. Now, up through this year, it's been $80,000 a year, half of which came from room rental fees from the community center, the other half coming from property tax. And looking with the community center staff, Ryan and his folks, we've been able to reduce that from $80,000 a year to $58,000 a year, which is good. And then finally, we have the police camera sinking fund at $12,000 a year. Utility funds are $124,000 in 19, and the street fund, $85,000 in 19. That's tied, if you're wondering, why is the street fund contributing to the technology and equipment fund? This is related to the mobile asset data collection project in 2019. And then I'd just like to recognize the Rotary Club for their 2,500 per year contribution, which goes to the community center and helps fund equipment and, and technology and furnishing replacements there. And that's an annual thing, and we appreciate that. Utility funds, water, sewer, stormwater rates, this is the portion of rates that is dedicated to capital projects. So, as you see, the 2 million a year in water, 1.4 million in sewer, and 525,000 a year in stormwater. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Francie, who will update you on the REIT forecast. The last time we talked about REIT in terms of a six-year forecast was back in March when we did the CIP kickoff with the council.
Sorry. I am good? Okay, thank you. So, first of all, the real estate excise tax forecast is detailed on pages G4 and G5 in your budget document. There's more detail there than I'm going to cover tonight. Staff has reviewed REIT receipts through September of this year, and at this point, for this year, 2018, we're forecasting a REIT surplus of about $480,000. So, the budget for REIT was done two years ago when we were adopting the budget for 27 and 2018. And the number of sales really are running consistent to what we forecasted then, but the average home sale price has boosted up quite a bit. So, that is where that $480,000 in REIT revenue exceeds the budget for 2018. Now, I just want to say, that REIT has been fully programmed into the 2019, the proposed 2019-2020 capital program. So, it has been used in the budget before you, the budget proposal for capital before you tonight. When we did do the REIT forecast back in March at the kickoff, we were forecasting 450 sales a year. That is unchanged at this point. The average sales price, though, is starting to tick down a little. Our average sales price has dropped the last two months, and this, the current forecast just reflects a small reduction from 1.6 million to 1.56 million. I believe we'll be fine with that for the year. So, and I mentioned it, but just a reminder, the two things that drive the forecast are the number of sales per year and the average sales price. We, we also, we forecast in two pieces, for home sales or property sales that are five mil, less than 5 million and are 5 million and less, and then for sales that are over 5 million. So, for this year, 2018, we're forecasting 3.77 million in REIT revenue, and then 3.91 for next year, 19, and 4.05 million for 2020. And then just touching on the utility rates that are, have been recommended by the utility board for 2019 and 2020, I'm going to look at it high level first. So, overall, for your average single, well, for all rates, 2019, the utility board's recommending their rates for water, sewer, stormwater, EMS result in an overall rate increase of 5.3%. And for 2020, own an overall rate increase of 4.7. So, an average of 5%. Given the operating budget, the capital budget, I feel like that is, we were expecting higher. So, I feel like we've done a great job with the rates. So.
And the primary driver is capital projects on this.
Yeah.
And by issuing bonds, we're able to smooth things out, or by proposing to issue bonds, we're able to smooth things out on the rates. Okay, I'm going to move us to the CIP project summary real, real quickly. Yeah?
Yeah, I sent you some other information regarding REIT. Can you just, you know, obviously with the sad passing of Paul Allen, I did see some articles in, in publication indicating that there was some sales of some properties that he once owned. I'm just curious if you can just sort of elaborate on that and what impact that particular sale has on, because I think that, that sale may have occurred after your projections, and I don't know if there's been any significant impact or will be any impact at all, so if you can just address that.
Sure. And Chip, why don't you go back to the, that slide? Thank you. So, through September, our, our REIT is running just ever so slightly behind my forecast. Our sales for homes and properties over 5 million, the revenue we'd be brought in through September was 227,300. There was one property sale at the very beginning of October, the one that Benson mentioned, which is for 14.6 million. For the city, that generates 72,000 in REIT, $72,443 in REIT. And that, with that property sale, it brings our REIT revenue for sales over 5 million to just shy of the 300,000. So, there's really not any extraordinary REIT generated by that sale. I think that's.
It just helps us meet our projections.
It just helps us meet our projections. Yes.
Okay. CIP project summary. We'll look first at the six-year plan, and this is by project category, just to orient you, just paint a broad picture. 134 projects over the six-year period, 100, and just shy of $102 million. You'll notice that almost half of it relates to water and parks and open space projects as determined by the amount of, of the capital projects over that six-year period. When you look at it by funding status, let me define this. Funded, no change means it's in the current six-year CIP, which is 2017 through 2022, and it's showing up in this one as well, and there's the only change that would have happened would have been a modest inflationary adjustment. There'd been no timing change, no scope change on the project. Modified refers primarily to a timing or a scope change. New is it's new to this six-year CIP. It wasn't on the current six-year CIP. And then, of course, unfunded or partially funded speaks for itself.
So, could you clarify again?
Sure.
The funded, modified? I didn't.
No worries. It means that it was in the current 17 to 22 CIP, and that in this particular six-year CIP, we made a change in either the timing and/or the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, let's look at now the capital budget, the 19-20 period by, by category. It's 98 projects for 19 and 20, $31.6 million. The, you'll notice that water, water, streets, and pedestrian bicycle facilities and sewer, the top three, that equals about two-thirds of other projects by dollar amount, just to provide some perspective there. When you look at it by funding status, you'll see that 96% of the projects are funded, okay? 4% are either partially funded or unfunded. And just a reminder, the reason why we show partially funded and unfunded projects is to put them on the council's radar. So, when things happen that we weren't expecting, a sale of a major commercial property or, you know, or whatever, there's an opportunity to come back to the council and to complete the funding for a partially funded project or for an unfunded project. And so, it's just to keep it on your radar, something that's important, we're looking for grants for, any other, you know, surprise funding source. Okay. And lastly, fund balances. This is important. We, Francie and I are pretty thrilled by this. This is unusual. You'll see some red numbers, the negative numbers. That's temporarily dipping into working capital reserves in these funds. And this is really just two funds, the capital improvement fund and technology and equipment. We're okay with that. When you see the big 426,000 dollar number in the 2022 column, that's okay. That fund can handle it, just temporary. Look at 2024, all numbers in the black, all positive numbers. That's what you want. It's okay to temporarily go negative. You're not really going negative because we have working capital reserves to temporarily absorb that. It all works itself out in the course of the six years. This is a good thing. This hasn't always been the case. As long-term council members, where we call, we've usually had problems in the street fund and capital improvement fund in particular. Yes, sir?
If I could, I just would use this moment to ask you to, sort of, back to basics in a big way, but we're asking the voters to approve a levy lid lift.
Right.
Because we have predicted shortfalls, yet you've just told us that everything's going to be balanced. Help us understand the difference between these two situations.
So we're splitting our financial world into the operating budget, which is where we have our financial challenges, and the capital budget, which is what we're talking about tonight. The funding sources are primarily different, not exclusively, but primarily. So for example, we use real estate excise tax as a primary funding source in the street fund and capital improvement fund. Utility rates fund both operations and capital projects. Okay? Our problems are regarding our operating budget and our non-utility operating budget, meaning the operating budget that's funded primarily by taxes and non-utility fees. Does that?
And why wouldn't we just take money from here and solve the other problem?
I legally cannot do that. I cannot take REIT and use it to fund the general fund, for example. I can't take utility rates and use it to address the general fund problems. Not an option for me. I literally am handcuffed. Yeah, good question. Next up, CIP project review time. We're going to, and I want to reference you to G13. We call it the horse blanket sheet. Section G of your budget document, page 13. So this is the one. Pull it out like this. We figured we just would go through this sheet. This summarizes all the projects. And while it shows all six years and the funding sources to the right of the sheet, we thought we, because of time, we were just going to focus on 19 and 20. It's what we typically do with the council. They're organized by project category and then by funding status, you'll see. We're going to, as I mentioned, we'll focus on the biennium and, and just because there's so many projects and just a, just a reminder, we didn't have our CIP review with the council back in June. That's the first time that's happened as long as I can, as long as I've been here. We had to sacrifice that given all that was going on in that timeframe. So we're doing that tonight, in effect. And to get through things efficiently, and as a reminder, since so many projects are, they're not new, right? You've, they've been in the CIP before, they've just been tweaked in terms of inflation or maybe the scope has changed or the timing has changed somewhat. We reviewed them with, with the council by exception, meaning we're only going to speak to them if you have a specific, specific question on a specific project. Now, in addition, because there's always projects that are of council interest and we're pretty good, not perfect, we're pretty good at knowing what you're going to care about. And we've highlighted, and I put in the agenda bill eight, we decided to take the small parks and street ends project. It just wasn't worth highlighting, so we've removed it from the presentation. It was just too small to really get into. So we're going to talk about seven notable projects we have dedicated slides to. With that, I want to invite Jessie and her folks up. Parks and Rec is first, again, starting from G13, if you want to follow along. And you'll note that for each project category, we had this overview slide that kind of paints a picture. And then we'll actually show tables of the listed projects. And when you see a project that's in red, let me just show you, go forward, like you'll see the next slide, open space vegetation management's in red. That means we have a dedicated slide. Hang tight, we'll get to that and present specifics on that particular project. Jessie, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Jessie Bond, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. And joining me tonight, Ryan Daly, the Community Center Manager. I mentioned at our last budget meeting that Ryan would be stepping in as interim director as I look towards maternity leave. Elaine Summergren and Paul West also here tonight. All right. So this first slide is just a good reminder, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan that we're currently working from was adopted in 2014. We have included in your operating budget a proposal to update that plan in 2019. It's an important reminder because we will take that planning opportunity to evaluate, prioritize, strategize the out-years of the Parks Capital Plan. So I've had some questions about why is this project in 2022? I agree, I have some questions as well about the out-years. So we will take advantage of that strategic planning opportunity next year to reprioritize. Also, really, really important to remember, and I'll highlight this a little bit later, that the pros plan is what we have to adopt every six years. I don't set that schedule. I think it's frankly too, too often, but we need to do that to maintain grant eligibility. And we have received substantial grant funding over the years through RCO. So here's our snapshot of the Parks projects, 10 primary projects that are reinvestment, maintenance, major maintenance projects. The one next to open space and vegetation management is certainly misleading because that number represents many, many projects over the biennium. And then funding also for recreation trails projects. Next slide. Okay, so this is your list of currently funded projects. And I'm not planning to go through them. As Chip mentioned, we're doing this by exception. So the one we do need to spend some time talking about tonight is open space management. And then certainly, if you have questions about the others, we'd be happy to, to discuss those as well. Chip, let's go to the next slide. So before I dive into the details of what's happened with open space management, I just want to remind you that these are the properties that fall under this category for maintenance. I know in my short time here with the city, many of our community members assume that open space is this kind of obscure location where we have trees and that's it. And that's not exactly the case. Many of our most active parks, Luther Burbank being one, has a significant area that we treat as open space and use resources accordingly. Next slide, please. All right. So this is just a historical snapshot of the funding for open space management since the 2009-10 biennium. We've gone up a little over $100,000. The O and M levy provides 142,000 a year. Just a friendly reminder, that levy sunsets in 2023, so we have some future discussions in that regard. And then REIT provides the balance of funding for these, for open space management. So I believe our city manager sent to you some information probably more than a month ago about what has happened with prevailing wage rates. As you know, as a government entity, we are required by the state to follow public bidding laws and public contracting laws. And one of those requirements is the payment of prevailing wages. So when we contract for work, our contractors have to pay rates that are determined by the Department of Labor and Industries. We were admittedly blindsided, I think like every other government entity in the state of Washington, in August, when we learned that the prevailing wage rates were increasing for landscapers by 111%. So effectively, the hourly rate we will now, our contractors will have to pay, which is passed on to us, it's going from 1787 to 3767 an hour. I can tell you, in my time in this business, I have never seen a jump like this. This is pretty unprecedented. It did catch us off guard. We were anticipating an increase, but not, not this. So the greatest impact is to your open space management budget and the reason we're talking about it. So let me walk you through the chart and tell you about how we've done our estimating at this point. So in the, the first column is a 1718 budget. And where you see restoration contracts, that's actually the portion of the 1.07 million budget that we contract out. So we go out to bid and we have contractors come in, actually quite a number of them to do the maintenance work. So a little over half of that budget goes towards maintenance contracts. The other half is for everything else. It's for the staff that work in this area of capital projects, supplies, plants, material, things like that. Going to the next column, we simply inflated the restoration contract number by 111%. I will admit, it's not perfect math. We know there's more complicating factors than just the payment of laborers, but it was the best, best number we had at this point. So the estimated need for 1920 to maintain level of service is about 1.16 million to continue doing the work we did in 1718. We also inflated the other part of that budget by 4%. So again, staff costs, supply costs, things like that. So our estimated need is 1.7 million, just solely based on this prevailing wage increase. Go ahead.
You know, I think it was at the last meeting, I think, whether it was the city attorney or city manager, mentioned that obviously everybody was caught off guard with this, but I thought there was some discussion by either the city attorneys or city managers about trying to address this issue. I don't know if that's true and are we now locked in for sure or is there a chance that this number might decline?
We are hoping that the statistician who, we sent a letter, along with several other jurisdictions sent letters, I know Bellevue sent a letter, Renton sent a letter. We're hoping that it will be reevaluated. From our perspective, it's not necessarily a done deal and time will tell whether or not they reevaluate this increase as to landscape wages. It's, it's specific to landscapers and part of the City of Mercer Island's analysis was that they applied this to the Puget Sound region, not factoring in that there was a large exception in the collective bargaining agreement that they looked at for large-scale projects. Most of ours are on the small scale side. And so that was the argument we made to ask them to revisit this methodology for computing this number. So we're hoping that it will be revisited, but we don't know.
Can you clarify whether or not this is something that the state legislature takes up or is this something that there's a person in Olympia or wherever that will actually be able to make the determination? How, how, how and when would we see some degree of resolution to this, one way or the other?
That's a great question, Mayor Burtland. And I'm not sure if it's going to go beyond the industrial statistician who we asked to revisit this and if it will be taken out by the legislature. Right now, it's clearly within the purview of the Department of Labor and Industries, specifically their industrial statistician.
And I didn't come prepared with my prevailing wage legislative history, but this was tied to a legislative change that happened last year, which Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, it allowed prevailing wage rates to be tied back to bargaining agreements. The interesting thing about landscaper bargaining agreements is there's not just one, there's, there's many. And so we believe, as others do, that there was an error in how this was tabulated. We have not had success yet, per Carrie's comment, but we and many, many others are actively engaged in this conversation.
And no general sense of when we might have some degree of resolution?
No, we continue to monitor it and we occasionally follow up. We are hoping to know more soon. Jessie's right that this was prompted by the legislature tying this to a collective bargaining agreement. That agreement said for projects less than 275,000, those would be exempted out of this collective bargaining agreement. That we submit is, our, our contracts don't meet that threshold. So our argument was that we should also get carved out of this. So hopefully, the industrial statistician will revisit this and will hopefully lower the prevailing, prevailing wage for that category of work.
As you can imagine, literally every government entity that's contracting for landscape maintenance is impacted. This is millions and millions of dollars that, it's school districts, housing authorities, everybody's come to the table and said, this is not acceptable. So we're hopeful for change, but we cannot guarantee it at this point.
So we're budgeting with due caution.
We are, we are. So if, and I'll get to the next slide.
We've got Dave and then Saleem.
I, I just want to have you touch while you have everybody here. Can you explain to the public what open space vegetation management is real quickly so they understand? We're talking about CIP.
Sure. Good point. I'm going to defer to Elaine. She can do, write a much better explanation than I can. Did you get it? No? Okay, you're on now.
I think, yep, that one's working great. Open space vegetation management. So open space vegetation management covers all of the areas of our parks that are not considered maintained portions of the park. These are the parts of the parks that are not mowed or have horticultural landscape beds, but are left in a natural state, more as a habitat value for ecosystem services, stormwater buffering. Generally, on Mercer Island, most of those are forested areas. Not only do we maintain vegetation with them, within them, but also a full trail system within them. And the work that we do in those forests is various parts of restoration. So this includes removing noxious weeds and invasive plants. It includes replanting, so extensive tree planting for declining canopy. And what else am I missing there? I think that's most of what we do in there.
And, and that's very active right now, right? We're in the beginning of tree planting season, so I've seen personally staff out there, not necessarily city staff, but contractors planting right now.
Yes, we generally plant thousands of plants every fall.
They'll just point out that Chip unveiled the map of open space properties. Thank you. Dave, did you have a?
Yeah, absolutely. So certainly shocking and horrifying to everybody in the room, right? And understand that we don't have a choice until there are some decisions made about the rate of pay, but we certainly have a choice about the amount of those services we consume. And I want to see if there's an appetite, either in your group or within the council, to begin to talk about how do we cut back on the consumption of those services? I realize if Dan's watching on TV, he's going to race down here and get me.
Or Elaine might.
I get it, I get it. But you know, until there's some resolution, like just with the simple calculation, that's like $75,000 per year per landscaper, which is, might, it might change careers. So if there's an appetite to constrain our spending on this until we can get, until we can get the, some resolution to the hourly issue.
That is a perfect segue. May I keep going and then we'll talk about what that?
I just wanted to set you up.
Absolutely. So this is a condensed version of the previous slide. Again, top line in 2017-18, 1.07 million was budgeted for this work. Your 1920 budget is currently at 1.485, almost 1.5 million. Our estimated need, again, it's based on the math that we're able to do right now, is 1.7 million to maintain level of service from last year. So we, we have proposed an increase that came from REIT and Chip or Francie can talk more about that. That leaves us short about $200,000. So we, we are looking at a level of service reduction. And I think your question might be, well, Jessie, what are we going to reduce? Is it acres maintained? Is it less invasive plants? Yes and yes. It's probably a little bit of everything. Chip, if you can go to the next slide. This is a situation that came on late in the budget process, but I'll just remind you, we have an adopted open space vegetation management plan. It was adopted by the council. It has identified priorities of work. We will use that to guide our level of service reductions. We are still working on that. Part of what we don't know, and even the contractors we work with, is we will, we will put our bids out as we normally do. We don't exactly know what we're going to get back. Is it going to be a straight 111% increase? Is it going to be something less, something more? So we, we need to test the bidding environment. Our contractors are just as caught off guard by this as we are. So that's using the guide, the plan to guide our level of service reduction. That's where we plan to head. I've already mentioned, we'll continue working on this with Ellen and I and all of our other government friends. We also will be talking about alternative delivery methods. And to be candid, I know some of our peer cities are just. And to be candid, I know some of our peer cities are just bringing all this work in-house. We didn't feel that that was something we could pull the trigger on right now, today. There are other implications, certainly our ability to attract and retain staff, limited space, you need more trucks, you need more equipment. But it's worth it if we are not successful in, if Ellen and I does not reduce the rate, we are not successful, we will need to begin looking at other delivery methods for the service, which we would be spending time in 1920 on. The other thing, back to the question, is in 2019, it will probably be in the second quarter, we would plan to come to you with the standard open space vegetation management report, tell you where we're at, perhaps continue the conversation about level of service reductions, and we should have more information by that time. If the council desires to make a change now, we would certainly talk about that, too. So that is, that is open space management. It's really the most significant change in our budget. I have a few more slides, but if there's any questions at this point, we can pause.
Dave?
Just trying to take the temperature of the council. So, appreciate that we're not going to have to swallow the 111% increase, but we're still saying we're going to reduce levels of service and, and take down a 50% increase, right? Which seems steep, because it's already starting as a big number. I guess I'm polling my friends up here to see if there's an appetite to bring that down to current spending level and not go up to that 50%, or how would you have that discussion?
Well, I think where we've been generally at sort of a macro level with regard to the budget conversations, both operating and capital, is for us to be providing questions, raising issues, and then the conversation and tough decisions will actually be made on the 20th. So I think what we would capture is the extent to which staff would recommend seek further potential reductions in the level of service, be it, as you say, a number of acres, number of trees, however one does it. But equally, whether or not there's going to be some degree of appetite coming from other council members to explore it. We wouldn't get into the details tonight. Saleem?
So, from my perspective, I've followed this issue pretty closely. It's a timing issue, there's a lot of discussions, a lot of moving parts. If we were to get as far as approving this in the biennium, and we got, right now, I assume the services are being done under the old contract, so the people we're seeing out there, we're not subject to 111% increase.
Through the end of this year.
You're outbidding, you're looking at the next biennium, you're looking at what you might contract in 1920. Would this come before the council, even if we approved this in the biennium, to say, "Hey, council, do you want to actually do this?" If it came back and it was, you know, 111% higher, would, would this come before us again as a body, or is, is this approval of the CIP and these funding amounts for the open space vegetation management? You know, what is the process there?
Yeah, I think the question is, the staff will return in 2019 with an update. And what would that update include, and what decision-making would, would you anticipate to the best of your current knowledge?
Well, let me just say this, generally, contracts are awarded by the city manager once the budget's approved. That's not something we would generally bring back. I would anticipate, though, by, let's say, June of 2019, maybe sooner, we will know where we are with Ellen and I. This was our, again, our best strategy was to try to close the gap short-term, because we were going out to bid in an environment where the new Ellen and I wage is set. It is not something we can adopt.
I would chime in and say, I think we'll be more creative with our contracts. We might do some short-term contracts, some more limited in scope contracts, until we have a better idea of where this is going.
And we are talking to our contractors about bidding strategies. We've typically, you know, bid smaller pieces of work. We're talking about, is there an advantage to, to bidding more projects together? We're looking at everything right now, today. I don't have a solid recommendation on how to close this gap. We're working on it. There's also, I will say, a mid-biennial budget conversation that would be timely for us to reevaluate this fund at that time. Is that appropriate, Chip?
Absolutely.
About a year from now? The mid-biennial?
So, what you're faced with is, in essence, while you're adopting a biennial budget ultimately, the direction could be, you know, here's the amount for 19, let's revisit the 2020 budget in November of next year. That's one option. If this is something where you're just uncomfortable with the budget that's proposed for 19 and 20, and you want to skinny it down further, you would save that decision for November 20th. And the challenge that staff would have is, we can't paint a picture for what that would look like, right? It would be an arbitrary, you know, here's your dollar amount for 19 and 20 from the council. That's the challenge, just because of the timing of this, we just can't paint that picture for you.
Bruce?
Help me understand the timing of when contracts will be negotiated versus this hopeful revisiting of the prevailing wage law. The place I'm going is, I wouldn't want to see us in a scenario where we go and negotiate and are sort of locking in contracts at $37 an hour, and then six months later, we're told, "Oh, just kidding, it's 17, but we're locked in at the higher rate," and, or have done a bunch of work at the higher rate, and are sort of shooting, you know, regretting that we've gone down that path. The place I'm going is, you know, how do we maintain the flexibility here, or avoid spending more for work than there's a possibility we'll have to spend?
That's a great question. And you know, in the history of micro prevailing wage rates have never gone down, so, to your point, if we execute a contract in March of 2019, and the next month the rate drops, that's something I've actually never dealt with. I presume we would write into our contracts some ability, and of course, we'd be working with Ellen and I, we're not in total control of this, to make sure we could accommodate that adjustment. That being said, to Francie's point, we're not looking to execute contracts for the full biennium at this point. We will have to take smaller bites into 19 to keep the work moving, while we're being mindful of what's happening with Department of Labor and Industries.
So what I'm hearing, then, is the general sense that, that we're going to have to be as flexible, yet as prudent as possible in 19, and then really, the decision for 20 will come as a consequence of whatever the Ellen and I decisions are?
I think that's well summarized. And keep in mind, we haven't ruled out, you know, a number of options, including trying to bring some of this house, this work in-house. The timing of this, though, just didn't allow us to really fully build out that scenario and present you with really well-thought-out options. I need some more time. But that may be an option. I'm also frankly, a little concerned about making any commitments to in-house labor, because that's a very hard market right now, too, especially when our contractors will be paying $37.67 an hour.
So I think, what I'm hearing, then, is for the 20th, is to come back, you know, with some proposed directions for 19, understanding then that 20 would probably be brought up with greater information, but also a year from now, in the sense of the mid-biennial budgeting process. So just a little more specificity in terms of what some of the choices are that we can make. Is that a fair?
No, I think that's totally fair, and I get the balance between triaging, letting the open spaces get away from us. You know, if we were to stop work for two years and let this thing settle, if it ever did settle, that could be horrific, too. So just giving us some options on how we might look at reducing, you know, the work for a period of time, doing certain triage work, and just maintaining it at its status quo.
All right. I have just a couple of wrap-up slides here.
Carrie's got a question, or comment.
Excuse me, just a quick update. It looks like on November 9th, the prevailing wage advisory committee will be meeting, and we're hoping that they will take up this issue and discussion at that meeting. Again, several other jurisdictions besides Mercer Island have written letters, and so we're hoping to have some more information to follow up on this as soon as November 9th.
Great, thank you. Keep our fingers crossed. All right, I think the final two slides here. Chip, okay, as Chip mentioned, as we work through the presentation tonight, we will be highlighting the unfunded or partially funded projects. And the one that we wanted to spend just a little bit of time talking about is the Luther Burbank dock repair, which, let's go to the next slide. Particularly, we wanted to call this one out, as you know, dock repairs, replacement are very challenging projects. Luther Burbank dock is at the end of its useful life, or very darn close. There's an important piece here to call out. This is where your PROS plan becomes very, very important. We are applying for a grant, actually, it's due in two days, to support the design work we would like to do in 19. We're estimating, if we're successful, about a $90,000 grant from RCO. Tick forward to 2021, when we will be in the queue to actually be doing the repair work, we would be going after another boating facilities grant, which is conservatively estimated right now at 175,000. We hope to actually have additional resources, grant resources, we can apply for. We will not be able to apply for that grant if the PROS plan is not adopted by February, end of February 2020. So I just wanted to show how that plan sort of weaves into our future plans for a project that is certainly a high maintenance and safety priority.
I actually did have a question, if you're done with this, about the South Mercer playfield, ball field, backstop safety upgrades. I mean, I know where they are, and I know generally what they are based on what's in here. Is this, is this an area where it's sort of a, it's both a Parks and Rec facility, but also a school district facility?
Correct. It is actual school district property, it's our, we do the maintenance.
So this is, this is both, but this is a capital project, so it is just on the maintenance. Has there been any conversation about what this project means, and particularly, what this project means in the context of the women's softball team? Would that, if we were to look at this project and there were to be issues with the funding, would that have a, an impact on the high school women's team?
An impact in?
Well, insofar as, these are improvements that are to be done, if the improvements weren't done.
So you might recall, and Paul will correct me if I have this data point wrong, this project was not previously funded. We moved it into the funding category, first of all, because of safety and risk management needs. It is a best practice with athletic fields, softball, baseball fields, to have netting and improved backstops for foul ball safety. I also had a concern about the equity of our investments. We've, we've put quite a significant amount of funding into Island Crest Park, and not nearly the same infrastructure improvements into South Mercer. So we needed, we needed to reevaluate and make sure that we're treating all of our resources in an equitable way. That's why that change happened.
Great, thanks. Benson?
Anyway, with respect to this particular project, I'm just curious, I meant to go out there and look, but is there signage now regarding, warning the public about the dangers or the hazards of foul balls, or telling people to be aware of?
Duck.
Duck?
Yes, there is.
Any other questions for Jesse and her staff?
Counsel? Benson? Yep?
I just, I just.
Bruce, then Benson.
I'm going where we shouldn't go in terms of designing things, but, but I'll go there anyway. This is about, as I understand, putting fencing over the, the public areas between the fields, but as long as you're putting posts up, why not put the fence over where the foul balls are coming from and keep them from going there in the first place towards any of those areas? Just a, just a curiosity as much as anything. Seems like that's a place to constrain them, rather than trying to keep them from landing on people's heads after, after they've gone out.
It has been done. I don't believe it's recommended. You end up with balls and birds and all sorts of things. You're talking about an overhead net, right, versus the straight-up nets?
You know, you see it all the time with sort of cages around the batter's box, right? With the ball goes up, it's going to come back down, rather than continue on.
I will, at the risk of designing this tonight, I will just tell you, there are some operational and risk management challenges with that. Teenagers, for example, see that as a fantastic opportunity to climb on the nets, and we then have to engineer for all sorts of crazy scenarios that we don't have the ability to supervise, but I like where you're headed. I wish, I wish we could do that.
I will stop now.
Benson?
I am not designing a thing, but I have a question on G25, and this is, I realize this is not in the current.
Can you tell everybody what the project is?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is on page G25, it's the Luther Burbank Park new facilities, and this is not in the biennium, but what, I was curious, because in the description, there is regarding public safety issues, because the parking lot is not lit, and then there was other discussions about other improvements that seem to be quite separate and distinct from this parking lot issue. So I was wondering whether or not it's possible to, this is a question for the staff, I mean, whether or not it's possible to carve out this particular project into two, one that pertains to the parking lot lighting issue, and the other regarding the other improvements. Again, I'm just concerned about the safety issue, and so I don't know if that's something that you folks have thought about.
You want to take this one, Paul?
They certainly are two distinct projects. There's not, there's nothing that links the two projects inherently, so that is up to council to decide whether to lump them or split them.
Is it possible, before we make a decision, that you can come back and at least break it out, so we know what the cost is of the parking lot lighting versus the other improvements?
Sure. You know, I also want to just zoom out for a moment and remind you that these are projects in the out-years. And I, again, as your new Parks and Recreation Director with new eyes on this, I, I would recommend limited touches on the out-years. I think we're looking ahead to a PROS plan, provided it's funded, that will reprioritize all of these projects. We can get you those numbers with ease.
Yeah, and I realize they're in the out-years, and I said that in the beginning. I'm only concerned because of the safety issues that were raised in your description, and so.
And to your point, and with all due respect, safety is, we have reprioritized the 1920 projects based on safety, so that's a very good point. We'd be happy to get that number for you.
Counsel, anything more? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Back to Chip.
Okay. Good news, we don't have to talk about street projects, because you reviewed that back on May 1st, and then approved the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, back on June 5th of this year. That is a subset of the CIP. It's already been put to bed, so we don't have to talk about that stuff. Which moves us, yes, sir, on streets.
Benson has to go there?
No, 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 I, not about, I'm just curious about, this is on G46, this is your Town Center Streets North. The only question I have is, in your description of the revenues for this particular project, you know, identifies the street fund, and I was just wondering whether or not impact fees have any bearing, or at least, do they provide any type of revenue source? And that's the only question.
On this one, looks like no, Francie.
Okay, well, there it is.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next project category, which is general government. Again, this includes technology, equipment, vehicles, and buildings. Here's an overview slide, we're talking about 26 projects in the biennium, just under 4.9 million. A large chunk of them are related to our public buildings and reinvesting in those, $1.6 million and around numbers. Vehicle replacements, as we recall, this is, we have our own little fleet fund, we accumulate money into a sinking fund, and so the planned vehicle replacements equals 1.2 million in 19 and 20. But that's already been pre-funded. So, let's invite Mike Kaser up, Mike Mandela from FIRE, and Marcy, our facilities, Marcy Olson, our facilities guru. They'll be here to answer questions. I'll be your tour guide through general government. I have the first slide of funded no changes put up there. Any questions on these particular projects before I move to the next one?
Hey, Chip, on the previous slide, can you remind me what sustainability for 25,000 is?
Sure. Francie, you want to take that one?
So, several biennium ago, we added a project just for sustainability opportunity projects. A lot of those have been. A lot of those have been, in the past, LED lighting in the town center, at the community center. This is kind of a sinking fund, not, not truly, but the idea originally was that we would do projects that had payback, that would refund the project. Now, we don't really manage it that way at this point. It's really $25,000 a biennium that's available, should a project be identified. So we haven't specified anything at this point. We have done several in the past. I don't, I believe there is not one identified for the current biennium. So it's really just available if the council, because that has been a council priority, sustainability. It's available if a project comes, if some specific work is identified around sustainability that the council wants to pursue.
And Marcy looks for opportunities in public buildings where she could use this if appropriate, right? Beyond just street lighting, that we've used it in the town center before, or lighting in the community center parking lot.
Yeah.
Is there a slide with a total of all of the IT projects? Like, I see them kind of scattered around, but it's hard to identify all the IT stuff.
No, but I can, I can, I can get it for you. Give me a few minutes.
Okay, I'm going to move us back to this slide. Any questions on these projects? Let's see where our website redesign is coming in 19.
So, I do, so, Mike, of that computer equipment replacement, I'm guessing that, sorry, I'm not talking on my mic, I'm guessing that covers staff laptops as well as servers and it's the whole shoot match. So of that, three, $400,000, what percentage of your, of your total IT estate does that represent replacing?
That's a good question. It depends. So we have, I would say roughly maybe 12 or 13 categories of equipment that range from servers, firewalls, network switches, computers and laptops, police and fire MDCs. The lifecycle for each of those is different. So, for example, we try to make a server last seven years, whereas we might try to make a computer last five. So it's hard to give you an exact percentage, but I would say generally the average lifecycle is roughly five years if I averaged all of them together.
Okay, so, so my question's a little bit different. If, if, if you're replacing half a million dollars in two years, does that represent 10% of your total infrastructure investment that falls under that line item, or does that represent?
I was going to say roughly 20%.
20%. 20%.
Can I jump in? For the total for technology projects, probably the best place to look is page G160. That summarizes the projects that are being purchased out of the Technology and Equipment Fund. So there is some equipment in there too, but that is your summary list of technology projects.
Can I move us to the next? You bet. I'll press pause.
While they're researching that, can you tell me, as, as you look at the IT projects, are there any projects that are fully scoped, and then others that are not? Some that have potential to creep and others that don't? I assume your equipment numbers are pretty locked in. You know what equipment you're buying, you said it's 20% of your fleet, and you're going to do that. Is there anything else in here that has potential to grow?
So really good question. So our projects generally on the software side are not fully scoped. We have a high level understanding of what we want to do with the department and/or the organization. We do a little bit of general costing with a couple of vendors based on a broad discussion with them. We can't get specific numbers until we give them specific requirements. Once the council adopts the budget and moves the project forward, we then get into specific scoping and developing specific requirements. Sometimes we do a full procurement process and, you know, we get specific numbers at that point. Historically, I would say it's very rare that we go over these numbers. We did have a project, for example, in this list biennium that we did, but we did that very purposefully. It wasn't an unforeseen, we made a calculated choice to try something new with it. But generally speaking, at least in my experience here since 2004, we typically stay under the numbers that you see here with rare exception. It does happen, but it's not the, it's not the norm.
Dave? You? Okay. We can always come back.
Sure.
I'm going to move us on to the next slide. Is that okay? Or you want to stay focused on technology?
Okay. I mean, it doesn't mean that it's completely closed, if you want to circle back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So you have a mixture of building repairs, the planned fleet replacements are there, page 68. Any questions on these particular projects? I just will mention on our various public buildings, includes our fire stations, community center, Luther Burbank Admin, City Hall, and of course, the maintenance building, which sometimes, sometimes is referred to as the maintenance shack. I should mention that during the Great Recession, I noticed in the agenda bill, and following the Great Recession, we've had no choice but to defer quite a bit of maintenance. And we tried to really get this built into the six-year CIP. It needs to be done. You can't defer maintenance forever. There's a number of projects that are planned in the coming six-year period related to various buildings. But seeing no questions, I'm going to move us on to the next slide. Any questions on these projects?
I did have a question. Regarding the permitting system upgrades, because this is, I'm assuming this is part of DSG, it's part of the permitting process, is there a way to capture some of this in the fee rate study that we do, or the study that we're going to do, such that we can capture some of the cost of this system as we look at the total cost of running the department and issuing permit fees?
We, I'm looking at Mike, the technology surcharge fee?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just whispering to Francie about. So we currently have a technology fee that gets assessed along with the permit fees. And we have discussed how to capture all the permitting activity, technology costs within that. That fee's relatively new. It's only been around for, I think, two budget cycles at this point, so we're still, you know, figuring out how to do exactly what you're describing, so I think we can take that back.
It's currently 3%, as I recall?
I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Looking at, I'm pretty sure it's 3%. In any case, it's something that we need to look at and revisit.
Okay. Because, I mean, the extent to which we are allowed by law to capture the expense of the IT system supporting the permitting process, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Here's some funded new projects, fairly modest amounts. Any questions on these?
Can you just comment on the city facility security cameras?
Oh, that's a good one.
Yes, so we have security cameras at city facilities. Places like the thrift store have cameras to help, you know, loss of items there. We have security cameras at places like your water reservoir, or City Hall, or, you know, other city facilities. There's a couple of areas that need the cameras replaced, and this just funds that effort.
Those camera replacements?
It's camera replacement.
Okay.
So I noticed that your network communications line item didn't make it to the slide. $300,000.
We're going to call that out specifically and have a.
Oh, it's got its own.
It's coming up.
It's got its own special slide.
Yep, it's coming up. We're not going to hide that from you, don't worry. So, here we are. These two projects will get highlighted. We'll invite Jason up to talk about fuel cleanup, solar remediation, and then Mike has some special slides for you on the network communications infrastructure. Jason?
So solar remediation, so you recall that earlier this year, we came for you with an appropriation request for basically two injections here at the site. We've been in discussions with the property owner, and we actually met last week, and the first injection is happening actually this week. So we've agreed to the scope of work, which is great. The first injection will happen this week. The second injection's not going to happen for another six months. At that point, we'll have updated data to come back to you. And with that data, hopefully, there's a revised scope of work for a smaller dollar amount, hopefully, in the future. But as you recall, this is required by the MUCCA under the RCW, and we have a legal requirement to remediate this site. And so sometime in Q2, I expect to be back to you with updated data and a new appropriation request for what's left at that site. Recall that 50% of this project is being funded by WCIA, and we expect that to continue. So as proposed in the budget, it's high-level dollars, what we expected during the last time I was here, ongoing. Hopefully, those dollars will be less, but we won't know until additional data is gathered. So stay tuned. More to come.
I should just mention, in terms of funding, we're looking for 50% of the funding cost, and if the leveller lift passes tomorrow, that frees up a portion, a portion, not all, of the $2 million that I'm using to balance the 1920 budget for the general fund and YFS fund, that you could then apply to this project. But as Jason noted, we won't know how much we really need until Q2 of next year, so we can afford just to wait till then.
So Chip, looking at G69, and in terms of 2019 and 2020, it has other funds at $240,000, nothing from the general fund, and so I'm just curious, what's the source of that money, the 240?
Yeah, it's 50% WCIA.
Right.
And, and the other 50% is unfunded. It's contention on, if the leveller lift passes, I can find enough one-time money from fund balances to make up the difference.
Okay.
Okay? If it doesn't, we'll have a more, we'll have a conversation on the 20th about how to prioritize this relative to other CIP projects.
Saleem?
So I'm, maybe I'm not following, but the funded line is WCIA's contribution, unfunded is what we would need to match to get the other 50%?
Yes.
So here, as we are in the CIP, we're short that amount because it's unfunded? Or that's in the CIP and funded in 1920?
It, it's unfunded at this point.
So you're looking for 240 if we can find it tonight?
We need to come up with 120, WCIA then matches the 120.
Per year, 1920.
And, and, and again, those are, those are our best estimates at this point. We're hopeful that we won't need that much.
So just to be clear, would you like the council to find that amount of projects that we call tonight out of 1920, so that that is funded?
What I would recommend is, is putting this as a follow-up item for November 20th, depending on the outcome of the election, and then we can revisit this on whether we need to do something with another CIP project to make up funding for this, or what have you.
It seems to me there's two decision points. There's the levy, and then there's the data that you come back with.
And, and let me clarify.
Yes.
The current work that I came back to you earlier this year with, the appropriation request, is funded. So it's going to be a carryover, that body of work is going to happen, so the two injections, it's the additional work beyond that is what you're seeing in the proposed budget here. That is the 50% that's unfunded. So the current scope of work is funded, it's the next phase of it that's unfunded, partially unfunded.
And the next phase is 19 and 20?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel, are you good with that? Okay.
I'm going to move us on to the next. We have a few slides, a four, I believe, dedicated to the network communications infrastructure on page G84. Mike?
Thank you. So I'm going to try to stay at a high level and just give you some background with this first slide. So the network or network communications is considered critical infrastructure, not only by me and your city staff and probably others, but the Department of Homeland Security outlines 16 critical sectors out there. One of them is communications, one of them is information, information technology. When I say critical in this context, though, I mean, the city's network supports pretty much every service that, that we do here at the city, from things like email, the telephone system, being able to access, you know, your enterprise asset management system and public works, data, I could go on and on in every department and talk about how they use the network to deliver services, to access information, to provide information, and to communicate. And I put this next bullet in, in terms of, you know, just a run-on sentence to kind of illuminate that. Buildings, devices, vehicles, sensors, employees, other government agencies, agencies like Norcom, the state government, the federal government, the internet, telephony, 911, I could continue on and on about how we use the city's network to do business. Generally, at a high level, my goal has been sort of these three elements at the bottom of this slide with regards to designing your network for you. I need it to be responsive, which just means it's fast and has adequate bandwidth for us to do the things that we need to do. It needs to be resilient. So we try to automate disaster recovery capabilities into it, so that IT personnel are not required to be onsite for it to recover itself. That's kind of a goal. And we have a business continuity, you know, element that we build into our strategy. So we obviously could lose parts of our business, just like any other business, and we plan for recovering from that. And then obviously, cost effectiveness. We have to be able to do what we do within the resources we're given. So 2018 has been pretty interesting. We kind of have been talking it internally in a sort of humorous way. The fiber stars have aligned for some reason over Mercer Island. I, I really honestly don't understand it or why, but there are a number of initiatives that are completely unrelated to the city, things like King County Sewer Main Project or Sound Transit's light rail station, as well as projects that the city is working on, like this data master plan implementation, its water meter program, that all have sort of network communication elements built into them. These unrelated projects have presented you with an opportunity that align really well with our network interests, how we communicate, how we get these services delivered. So go ahead and move on to the next one. So for example, King County, as you know, is replacing their sewer mains. In particular, the area that I'm focused on is from 77th Avenue to 77th Ave, crossing over I-90, and the community center area, along the I-90 Trail to the North Mercer Way, I-90 Crossing, near City Hall. So they are going to be opening up a trench along that pathway, and they have been willing to work with us to allow us to place conduit in that open trench. And you might imagine trenching along that length of trail would be very cost prohibitive for us to do on our own. But they're willing to work with us and let us put conduit in that trench. There's another small project in here that I wanted to talk about tonight, which is just a replacement of the fiber cable between City Hall and the Maintenance and Engineering Building. There's a number of projects, about eight, that relate to fiber in the city's network. Only two of them are in focus tonight. I only have numbers and specifics for you on two of them tonight, and I'm looking for direction on those. These other elements are going to come into focus in 2019 as some of these projects develop. So this project that you see before you, this network communications infrastructure, is simply me trying to tell the council and city management, hey, there are these things coming, and you really ought to take a look at taking advantage of them. And as they come into focus, I would like the opportunity to come back to you and say, okay, this one is now in focus. So for example, construction of the pathway along the King County Sewer Main Project, that is not in focus right now. All I have are design costs in focus. So as those elements come into focus, I'd come back to you and say, this is now in focus, here's what it is, here are the details, here's how much it is, here's the funding, is it okay to proceed? I'm not asking for the ability to proceed just with this entire project out of the gate. So again, you know, just to summarize, the two elements that I'm really looking for are those two that you see here, the King County Sewer Main design element, not construction, not putting in the fiber cable itself and turning it on, but just working with King County along their timeframe to get their design work done. And then replacing the cable between this building and your Maintenance and Engineering Facility, which needs to be done in general, but also will support future projects like the data master plan implementation and your water meter replacement program. So that I can take questions.
So can I just be super crisp? The first one, the King County Sewer Main Project, that's design, and the second one is actually physically putting or replacing?
Between City Hall and Maintenance, yeah.
The cable?
Correct.
Okay. So one is design and one is the physical?
Okay. And they're two separate projects unrelated to each other, yeah.
So Mike, how do all those numbers on the PowerPoint, how do they match up with the numbers that are on G84, which talks about?
Really good question. So generally, the process for CIP, as Chip alluded to earlier, we would have had a preview with the council in June-ish timeframe, and we would have come to you and said, look, there are all, there's this set of elements, you know, eight or so elements around network design. We want to talk to you about it like we're doing right now. We want to talk to you about it like we're doing right now. We want to let you know that this set of elements is dynamic. Some of these pieces are moving. Some negotiations are happening with these agencies. And when those come into focus, we will continue to come back to the council. And I realize this is the first time you're seeing this. So that's why the numbers don't match up. In the March-April timeframe, when we began development of the CIP, they were even less in focus than they are today. So, again, I was simply trying to get a number put together to the best of my ability at that time to reflect, hey, there are these things coming down, and I want to prepare the city to take advantage of those opportunities should you decide to do so.
So Chip, can I ask a question then, Bruce? And that is, so in other words, the descriptions and the numbers that we're seeing in our binder are reflective of approximately six months ago?
Not that long ago.
Because that's what I took from your statement is that when you...
Particularly in this project.
For this project.
Okay, and that's okay. I just want to make sure, then, that we understand that occasionally the numbers in the book might not match the numbers as are presented to us because you've had that opportunity to go and refine and/or further explore projects.
Yeah, at the time that the budget was developed for this project, it was a placeholder. It still is a placeholder, except that we're asking for support on the specific first step, the two, the two sub-projects, we'll call it, that Mike just highlighted. So we still have, we still are asking for a placeholder for this work, some of it to be designed or to be defined better, and the two projects that have been identified tonight.
So is the ask for the 120,000, which is 99 plus 21, or is the ask for the 300 plus 65?
So, good question. What I would suggest is the council give me a thumbs up to move forward on the two projects outlined specifically here. And then know that I will come back to you as those other elements come into focus, and I have specifics and I'm ready for you to decide, knowing that they will be in the range of the number that you see in this project. But that number is for sure going to change as those projects come into focus.
So 120 is a subset of the 365?
Correct. I think you can expect, should you decide forward on these, you know, that you would see these additional requests come at a later date.
Saleem?
So...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Bruce was actually leaning forward. My apologies.
So I certainly appreciate the sense of an opportunity presented to us, but I'm wondering, help me understand, a couple years, three, whenever it was, we had Comcast out drilling holes all over the island to run a fiber network on the island, and then sometime more recently, we had CenturyLink saying, we're going to run fiber in different places. And so there's a, there's an existing network of some sort out there. And then on the, related to that, you have, yes, you have these channels of opportunity at much lower cost than you would otherwise, but it, but it doesn't extend all the way to all the points that you might necessarily want to get to, your pump stations and SCADA points and things like that. So at the end of the day, are you, I'm trying to understand how you're imagining that you're best served by putting in these trunks versus using vendors who have existing infrastructure out there. Help us understand.
Sure. So I'll say two things. The first is, the city's network, even for a small agency, you're a full-service city. It's fairly complex and really difficult for me, and we could get into a lot of detail this evening that would take a lot of time and probably wouldn't want to do in a public setting anyway. So I'm going to be really careful to try to stay at a high level. The city's network comprises cellular connections, fiber connections, copper connections, satellite connections, wireless, wired. It's, there's a combination. We own some of it. We lease some of it. We lease some of it from other government entities, who then lease it from private sector entities. You're right, Comcast came in recently, and CenturyLink came in recently to do some infrastructure overhaul of their infrastructure on Mercer Island, related to the services that they provide. Historically, Comcast has worked with government agencies to provide fiber for government purposes. They are very much out of that business and trying to get out of it wherever they are. They very much like charging cities and counties just like they charge a business. So they, they aren't really trying to work with us the same way they may have 20 or 30 years ago. But generally speaking, we do have the need to connect vehicles and buildings and pump stations and people, and we use a variety of connectivity to do that. And I did have an opportunity to speak with Deputy Mayor Neese earlier about some details about that, and I'd offer any, you know, time up to any council member who wants to come in and get a more detailed look about how we, how we network here at the city. But it takes a while to explain it. It's not something I can boil down for you in a two-minute discussion, and I, I wouldn't do it any service. So I'd be more than happy at any time to, in a study session or, you know, just one-on-one, give you guys all the information you're looking for on that front.
Okay, but the main takeaway, I guess, should be for me, that although we're seeing these discrete opportunities, you have a clear sense of how they fit into a whole, and they don't end up being small pieces that...
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, I mean, sort of wonderful in and of themselves, but disconnected from anything else.
Absolutely. No, this isn't, this is part of a grand design, if you will. There is a, and I tried to illuminate that with those three sort of purposes, that resiliency, you know, the ability to recover from a disaster, speed, daily service delivery, customer service, our, you know, efficiency for staff. There's a lot of elements that we think about when we design the network, but yeah, it's, it's not hodgepodge. There's a, there's a purpose with it.
Hey, counsel, if I can just add, this is one of these, this doesn't happen very often. Ideally, we would have teed this up for you back in June at the CIP preview, which you mentioned we had to pass on, but, and then we would have had a study session between then and now, and there just hasn't been that opportunity. There's just been too much going on with the levy, with Fatoli's property, and other things. And so what Mike and I envisioning, and we haven't had a chance to visit with Julie on this, is having a study session either in January or dedicating some time, if the council's interested, your January planning session, to get into this topic a little bit and brief you. Because the, the timing, this is just one of these things, and you're, if I'm sitting in your chair, I'm a little frustrated because I don't, I don't have, I'd have more questions than answers at this point. And it's just, it's just the way it's worked out on this particular project, and it's unfortunate. It wasn't intentional. We apologize.
Saleem?
So, this is more to counsel. I think we could probably start talking about this a bit. We did have a study session on this, and this was in the study session of the King County Sewer briefing, and there was quite a bit of information in the packet about this project. And so my recollection was, it was a $300,000 to $500,000 range, and it was, that was the cost of design and conduit and implementing it within the trench that was going to be the King County Sewer Project. There were still unfunded, unknown in those, you call it out of focus or not in focus, the other ends of that project. So how does City Hall get connected to this conduit? How does the community center get connected to this conduit? And then, of course, provisioning on both sides of the circuit and standing it up. So this, in my mind, was put in the context of the council packet, saying to replace a leased circuit. And this is a circuit that we lease from King County, who leases it from a private party. I'm forced to look at this and say, what's the ROI versus the risk of losing that connection? Because we're, we might be gaining something, and I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty what we might gain, but ultimately, what we're deciding here tonight by beginning this funding process is the rest of the chipping away at the project. So it's $98,000 of design, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars of conduit, you're in the conduit with King County, somebody's got to inspect the work, somebody's got to make sure it's done right. I don't know that you have the bandwidth to do that. I don't even know if you're the right person to do that. Maybe that's DSG. This is a big, big project, in my mind. And so here, I would urge the council to say, if there's a funding need where we could look at, for example, the Honeywell site, and we find 240 for that, or there's some opportunities for other funding, I would not support this project. This, to me, is a big bite of the apple that we don't need to take on right now. I know it's an opportunity, and there's going to be a trench in the ground, and no trench should go unfibered, but to me, it is an opportunity that I'd take a pass on.
If I may respond, I don't want to interrupt your deliberation, but I just want to characterize it slightly differently, and we had a great discussion. And even with an hour that I had with a deputy mayor, it is difficult to really show you how the network works and how this element is pretty critical to how the city does business. The City Hall facility hosts our primary data facility. I hesitate to use the word data center because that sounds really, really snazzy, and I don't think it's that snazzy. And the community center holds our secondary. So this pipeline is actually critical to how we provide redundancy. We have built all of your business continuity functionality with regards to technology and communications at the community center. So our ability to keep these two buildings connected in a very stable, fast, reliable way is critical to me in my job in making sure the city can operate, you know, in a variety of scenarios, including just day-to-day. And you are correct, we do have an existing lease on fiber there. We pay a monthly recurring fee. King County has that fiber from Comcast, and as I mentioned earlier, Comcast is very interested in getting out of that game. I don't know when that will happen. It could be two years from now, it could be five years from now, it could be 20 years from now. And in terms of ROI, I really do think about the long term here. Your community center and your City Hall are long-term facilities that provide services. And so connectivity between them, to me, the ROI calculation, it's okay if you spread that out in long terms. That's just, just wanted to respond.
Yeah, and I appreciate the hour we took today. And the biggest part of that hour that I took away was, let's talk at the policy level. And I'm not sure this council has had a chance to really understand that network and what policy is guiding you, and where should we should make multimillion-dollar investments or not make multimillion-dollar investments. And from a policy perspective, given technology and how it's changed with cloud computing and Azure and AWS and all the things that we could be doing differently, I think it's probably a good idea for the council to come back to that and have that discussion. And this, I think, would be the kind of place to talk about the long-term technology roadmap, the infrastructure network roadmap, and how we look at these as opportunities or as passes. And for me, unfortunately, it's just a pass.
Well, the good news is we don't have to make a decision tonight. We can ask a bunch of questions and then come back. Wendy?
And I would ask, if we're going to have a study session on this and look at the nuts and bolts of what Saleem is talking about, that you also bring in the risk that we take in choosing one path or another, because I know the infrastructure is critical, and I know cybersecurity is a huge threat for all public entities and utilities. And that ratio, it's more than just ROI, it's risk exposure, it's cybersecurity, it's all of our data that, we have a lot of residents here that wouldn't want that data to be exposed. So I think that risk calculation is a lot more critical than the ROI by itself. So if you could include that in your presentation, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'm going to, unless you've got a suggestion, I'm going for it. Talk more.
Usually, that helps. So I would, I probably would speak against this expenditure for a couple of reasons. One, it feels like it, you know, we're in a time of financial contraction, certainly all around. We're seeing that on the, on the operations side, and this feels like very much an open-ended expense. The other thing is, you know, I, I think I am someone who knows, understands the nuances of networks and data center and standing up our own infrastructure. And I feel like, for us, as a very, very small entity, to put further investments in our own infrastructure when the world is moving to a different model of IT feels like maybe not, not the most advanced way to spend our very precious and limited dollars, particularly when we're in a position where we're saying, do I fix a dock that's super dangerous, or do I put in, you know, fiber optics? Like, it's not a choice anybody wants to make, but we're in a position where we're really being forced to make those kinds of decisions. So I would, I would pass on this expenditure for, for similar but a different set of reasons as well.
Can I make a suggestion? Oh, Bruce, go ahead, because Bruce is going to talk now.
Exactly.
And then I'm going to talk.
I don't, I don't have the depth of knowledge that the two of you probably have around this, but to Mike, I, help me a little bit, because there's, there's clearly this move to the cloud of sort of data services that is happening. But I view that, and I'm helping, hoping that you'll either correct me or support me on this, as somewhat, well, actually, as quite different from the SCADA-level kinds of things that we're doing, where we have our own pieces of equipment that we must be speaking to on a continuous basis, such that we're not spilling sewage into the lake, we're doing other kinds of things. And that, if I'm not mistaken, is not the kind of thing that's moving to the cloud in the same way. That's, that's more infrastructural, that has to remain in place. But please correct me if I'm wrong about that.
I think that is fair to say, and I, you know, the city has been moving to the cloud for over maybe five or six years now, where it makes sense. The city will always need to have a network. We could move all of our software applications to, you know, the cloud, but we still need a network to get there. You're right, things like SCADA, where we have pump stations and water reservoirs and things like that, we can't move those to the cloud, so we still need to communicate and monitor and control those, you know? And so cloud strategy is something I will nerd out with you as much as you want. I know we don't have time tonight. I'm happy to go down, how far down that road we've already gone, and how we view the cloud as it relates to our sort of overall strategy with technology here at the city. Government networks and government activities are pretty different than the private sector's. SCADA is just one of those examples.
Benson, are you? Well, I was going to suggest, because, again, you know, we're not making decisions tonight, but clearly, it's great to get the feedback. And, you know, what I'm hearing right now is, one element is a lack of information about, you know, what your three descriptions, what does it mean to be responsive, resilient, and cost-effective? Another element that's come up is this whole concept of cybersecurity, and I know that that is a to-be-scheduled session that we have. So what I think I'm going to suggest, if people are comfortable then, is either, you know, coming back to us with, you know, an email or a short white paper or something that is going to put these projects in context. I'd say the context that, you know, that Bruce has raised, and the context that Saleem has raised. I mean, the one thing that, when we had had a conversation that I took away was, what would be the impact of doing this or not doing this on our emergency preparedness? So in the event that the great quake or whatever does happen, and we have two emergency facilities at least, including the community center and town hall or city hall, what would this do for us or not do for us in that sense? So I don't know exactly what the outline of the email or the white paper or the something would be, but I think in order to help us make the right decision between go, no-go, or partial go, context. I feel like I'm, I don't have a picture here, but that's me, myself and I. Benson?
Well, I will agree, I mean, I probably have the least knowledge about all this IT stuff that you guys have, okay? So I'll omit it at that. I rely heavily on my own IT people. And so I guess I would, clearly would like to see a study session of some sort, because you are talking about policy issues. I am concerned, as Councilmember Wyker mentioned, about risk issues. I'd like to know where our WCIA stands on these issues, and maybe they have an, have an opinion as well. I have a question, though, if, and it's a timing question, okay? So if, there are clearly some council folks who are, have already stated that, based upon the information that they have, they are not terribly excited about putting this in the CIP. So the question is, if it's not in the CIP and we have the study session, is there a timing problem? I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know when a study session can be scheduled, and if happens after we have to approve the CIP, do we have a chance to come back, I suppose, to amend the CIP? I guess I'm looking to Chip and DeFrancy for some guidance, because there is a timing problem.
There is. And Mike, before I answer Benson's, or before we answer Benson's question, when does King County need to hear back from us regarding the design work? It's soon, right?
They, they were hoping to hear back from us a while ago. I think they're, they've been great in terms of waiting and sort of, you know, they're trying to work towards 90%, I think, by the end of this year. And they're looking, they're looking for the city to give them a, at least a formal yes or a leased-in-for-design at this time. Construction, I don't think, and I think Anne might have to correct me here, I think, begins in 2021.
Yes.
So, so you still have exit paths from this project for a while. What we're trying to get simply is, can we continue to partner with King County along their timeline, which is to get to 90% design in the near term?
And for $99,000, not the full three-something?
Correct.
Well, I was just going to, so if the, the council decides to give you the go-ahead to continue in the discussion, at what point in time do we have to actually write a check or, you know, make a contribution to this process?
It'll be spread over the next, let's say, six to eight months. As King County incurs the design invoices, they would in turn invoice the city as that process.
So during that six-to-eight-month period, could we back out? Could we decide after we... Could we decide after we?
Yeah, I think in theory you could back out really, I mean, obviously, the design engineers in King County wouldn't, you know, want that to happen, but, but I think we're looking for the full commitment before. King County would want the full commitment to hit your end for the full design process, if I'm understanding your question.
So basically, we make the decision before the end of the year, and then they execute starting in 2019 over a period of six to eight months? Is that?
I'm sorry, no, they are already trying to get to 90% design at the end of this.
Right, but we have to commit by the end of the year so that we meet their 90%.
They asked us to commit weeks ago. So we've been delaying them, trying to get in front of the council with your study session two weeks ago, and then tonight. I think I could delay them for another couple of weeks and just say, you know, our council is continuing to...
Well, you'd have to delay a couple more weeks anyway, because we don't vote on this until November 20th, anyway.
Yeah, and counsel, if I might, I'm concerned about talking too much about this, given the security involved, and obviously, we have to protect a great deal of data. Maybe what we could do is, I've done this before, offer where we schedule a time for two members of council to meet with staff to discuss the net, I mean, I, I think it's fair to say kind of what's overall driving kind of our, our big picture. And having that conversation offline, I think, is, is better and would protect, I think, the data and information that we need to protect. So if you wouldn't mind, I would suggest that I work with Mike, his team, come up with some times and see if we can't get you to come in over the course of the next couple of weeks to meet with his, his staff and him to get the overview. And for you to ask your questions in more details.
Super fast.
Yeah.
Super quick question. So at the end of my $365,000, are my buildings connected or I just have conduit buried in the ground?
So, that's a great question. So right now, the numbers that we know are $98,000 for design. We do not have specific numbers on construction. I'm anticipating that construction of the conduit and vaults for the King County element will be roughly the same as designed, so let's call it $100,000. There are a couple of additional segments that need to be added to complete the entire path, and then a fiber cable needs to be put into that. So there are additional elements that I don't have specific numbers for you tonight, and I'm hesitant to just throw out guesstimates. But this number reflects, again, a variety of initiatives and me trying to tell the council that they're coming and that I need to get this on your radar. And I would appreciate just an opportunity to come back when I have specific numbers for you. But for this path here, King County, Mercer Island Community Center to City Hall, I anticipate somewhere around $300,000 to $500,000 at the end to make that connection complete.
Okay, so, so the answer is for $365,000, they're probably not connected, and there's more project left to go in order to come, to, everything's flowing?
Yeah, again, so, it's hard, it's hard for me to just guess. It's, it's, it's a little hard to guess.
But you're asking for $365,000. I'm saying, what do we, what do we get at the end of that spend? And you're saying, not totally sure.
Sure. You get roughly 95% of that pathway. A pathway that will not open up like that until the next time King County replaces that same stretch some 75 years from now. And the likelihood of a pathway that aligns between two buildings that are as critical to our operations like these two, like I said, it's, it's, it's sort of unbelievable. It just doesn't, it's very surprising that, that you have this opportunity in front of you, so.
So Julie, I think we're gonna go ahead and take you up on that offer? Okay. Thanks. I know that was probably a lot more than you anticipated about the IT systems on the island.
And just to be crystal clear, we, we really need to make a decision on November 20th, whether we're going forward with the design work or not. We've, we've held off King County for a really long time. Okay, with that.
If I could, just if, if we could, I mean, I think, I certainly, in having the conversation with you offline, will be curious to understand better the alternative, the alternative being this existing system and, and that has the potential for go, being turned off. But that's, you know, so, yes, there's a plan here, but help us understand that too at the same time, so that, so that we, we understand option A and option B.
Mayor, I'm thinking this might be a good time for a break. Sewer's up next. I'm, I'm sensing...
Sure.
Yep, I think we've been up here a couple hours, so it is 8:14. We're gonna try for 8:20.
Six minutes?
Okay, Chip? We are ready.
Okay, folks. So the utilities are next, sewer, stormwater, followed by water. All these projects are funded by utility rates, not by REIT, not by taxes. I'll turn the time over to Jason.
Good evening. There we go. So with me to my right, we have Brian McDaniel, our Utilities Operation Manager. Next to him is Anton Alheller, our Assistant City Engineer. And then on the end is Patrick Yamashita, our City Engineer. So tonight, we'll talk to you about the utilities. Real quickly, I would like to note that we did, although we didn't have the June preview with the council, we have had a preview with the Utility Board. We had a Utility Board preview in August of this year. And then it was also revisited again during the September and October rate discussions that we had, that Frampton touched on earlier. And these projects are in the proposed rates, which you'll hear again on the 20th, November 20th, correct? So, real quickly, all of the utilities are driven by their own master plan, essentially. So on the sewer side, we have our general sewer plan, which we, Anne brought to you earlier this year in draft format. It's been sent off to the other agencies, and we expect to bring it back to the full council early in 2019. But the CIP breakdown for the sewer side follows the drafted sewer, general sewer At a high level, we have over 110 miles of sewer mains, over 2,000, 2,200 manholes, 18 pump stations. And just to remind you all, our sewage is shipped off-island to King County where they treat it. So on that note, the, the subcategories for the sewer projects are in front of you. There's 15 total projects for just over 5.2 mil. We're gonna talk about the SCADA replacement project at the end. That's the last slide, because it does touch both the sewer and the water, so bear with me on that. Again, it's the same format tonight. Funded and modified projects are in front of you. If there's any questions, please let me know. But again, you saw these during the draft, draft general sewer plan, and they're outlined in the CIP. So new projects, again, we have the SCADA system identified at the bottom. That's gonna be, again, that's gonna be the last slide we talk about, because it touches both water and sewer rates.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay. Okay. On the stormwater side, again, we're, CIP is focused on the comprehensive basin that was adopted, planned, that was adopted in December of 2006. We complete basin condition assessments, so we do a physical assessment of the site, looking at the water courses and make sure that projects are reprioritized based off erosion and replanting things and replanting schemes for those specific basins. We have over 117 miles of stormwater pipe, over 7,200 catch basins on the stormwater side, and over 13 miles of water courses. In particular, for this upcoming CIP, we have 14 total projects on the stormwater side for just a, totaling just over $2 million. Again, you're funded it, and you're funded with projects with no changes and the modified funded. I'll just draw your attention real quickly to the modified sub-basin tend dissolved metal source project. That's a grant-funded project. In the town center, we're actually adding oyster shells to help with stormwater improvements. It's a pilot project.
When does that actually start?
It should be starting towards the end of the year or January, February timeframe. So very soon.
So it's the end of this year?
The shells were delivered to the shop here a couple weeks ago, so it's ramping up.
Cool. I mean, I'm kind of curious what big, I mean, how, okay, satisfied with my curiosity. I mean, how big a pile of shells do we have?
Uh, it's, I haven't actually seen them. I just know they've arrived. I believe they're in, they're in sacks on a pallet in the warehouse right now, do you know?
Send us a picture. That would be...
And then again, you have your modified projects. So recall, on the stormwater side, we have quite a bit of permitting to go through, and a lot of times, our projects are delayed because of permitting issues through the other outside agencies. And so a couple of these projects have shifted due to timing because of those permitting Okay, moving on to the water utilities. Again, our water system plan is what drives our capital reinvestment. We have over 115 miles of water mains, two 4-million-gallon reservoirs, emergency well, 86 PRV stations. And then recall that water is provided via SPU via the Cedar and Tolt Rivers. For this biennium, we have 16 total projects, just totaling over $10 million on the water utility side.
Dave, you're leaning forward.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Maybe it's a Chip question, but the SCADA system shows up as a new expenditure, but we've been talking about it forever.
Sit tight, I'll get to that shortly.
Yes, sir.
So and then on the, recall on, on the water side, we have a list of substandard water mains. I think it's important to note that our subcenter water mains is determined by a number of factors, age of pipe, size of pipe, maintenance history, and then post-water advisory this last year. It's important to note that we added a water quality element to it as well. So we basically took water quality data and over, brought it over the top of the other data and reprioritized projects in subcenter water mains, adding water quality as a component of it. So some of our projects shifted a little bit by adding that water quality. So that's why you're seeing that $500,000 placeholder in 2019. And then we will come back to you later in 2019 with a discussion about issuing debt for a full replacement citywide or system-wide, spread across 2020 and 2021. So that's the $4 million that you see that would be debt-financed following, you know, choosing of a meter, the technology, and actually seeing what the data shows.
And at that time, you'll go ahead and also talk to us, because I know several years ago, there was a discussion about the extent to which this would spread out over many, many years. And then obviously, there's been a significant potential change. So you'll bring that up in the...
Absolutely. So that's part of the conversation, actually, is, you know, where is that return on investment? What's the cost-benefit analysis of doing it on a shorter, shorter window versus spreading it out over, you know, a 10, 15-year horizon? That'll be part of the conversation that we absolutely have. I can tell you that from the experience that we're seeing in some of our other neighboring jurisdictions, they had that same approach, but the return on investment was so great, they've actually expedited replacement of their current, you know, their system sooner. So, but that's a conversation we'll have.
Can you just touch on what is 10% loss in, in the volume and dollars?
Brian, go ahead.
The 10% loss. Thanks for the assist, Jason. The 10% lost is effectively what was sold and what we purchased. So that's how we calculate the loss. So how much we purchased from SPU...
But is that a million gallons? Is that a hundred thousand gallons? Is that, and then what does that cost us? Because we had to buy it and we didn't sell it, so.
That's a good question. I don't have the exact number in front of me. Actually, Francie might have a little bit of a thought on a cost for that.
The $10 dollar cost is probably about $200,000 a year. Give or take.
And then I know you guys had talked about smart meter technology, which would reduce your operational costs, so not to conflate capital with operations. But do you have any kind of swag at what you think the operational cost reduction would be through smart meters?
We do not have an exact number pinched down on what the reduction would be. There's obviously trade-offs. You know, you're going to trade staff time for actually reading meters versus the information that you'll gather from those meters. And we're currently right in the middle of that analysis to determine, you know, when we start selecting the type of meter versus the type of technology that we talk to. And then those costs vary greatly from one manufacturer to the other. So over the next couple of months, we're hoping to ratchet that down to some specified technology. We can actually come back with some sharper numbers for you on that.
Do you guys have a chart that shows us that loss getting up to 10.6? Has it just been a very linear and gradual crescendo to the non... I mean, we're talking about this because we're out of compliance. Is that right?
Correct.
So has anybody discussed a solution that gets us just below 10% that doesn't involve $4.5 million of meter replacement?
So in terms of history, I can tell you it's bounced around a bit, but it has been above 10% for the last two, last three years, right? And why it bounces around, we don't fully understand. But there are differences in timing between how, when Seattle does their meter readings on our master meter versus how we bill. There's a lot of factors. Have we looked at how to just reduce down to below 10%? I'll let you guys take that, but yeah.
So part of this project, that's a great question. Part of this project and the scoping and fact-finding is exactly that. So we added an element to that consultant to say, okay, what exactly are the focus points for our water loss? Their initial brush right at this time have been, it's pointing towards the meters. You want to replace your meters approximately every 20 years. And when our meters are greater than 15, we're approaching that point to replacing those. So it was kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will. But there's also the fact of the metering of the supply coming in. That comes into question when you start seeing losses move around. And specifically, when the flows go up, our loss goes up. When the flows go down, our accuracy increases. So it's really pointing towards meters, both on the billing side and on what we are receiving from Seattle Public Utilities. So that is part of the scope of that. And we'll be able to bring some of that back to you as well.
Okay, other water utility projects. And then we're going to quickly get into SCADA here. So I'll just make note, too, you have two abandoned projects listed there. So recall, we've added water quality analysis to our operations regularly. I mean, it's nearly tripled in terms of our data collection points. With it, it quickly identifies some maybe unnecessary redundancies in our water system. And so these two particular pipes were sort of, were flagged because of water quality numbers. And we're like, why are these here? And it identified that they're redundant line that actually, when the other asset was reinvested, the other pipe wasn't abandoned back in the day. And so it's a little bit of cleanup work on those two projects, but it's something that has to be done. So those are new projects. When we abandon a pipe, do we remove it or do we just shut it down?
We...
Typically, in the past, we have left it in the ground and just cut and capped it off. So it's effectively a conduit to ground.
And it's flagged, energy I system. SCADA, so I talked a little bit about this at the operating budget. So SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition and Telemetry Systems. Currently, our SCADA system supports both our water and our sewer utilities. So that's why you're seeing at the end of our presentation nights, because it's funded both from the water and the sewer side proportionally. As we've talked about numerous times with the Utility Board, which Councilor Weesentino was part of the Utility Board for many of these conversations, this has been an ongoing issue that was brought really back in 2017 as we started to roadmap what we're going to do to replace the system. Or systems, I should say. This last, last year, we went through a master planning process for the SCADA system. What does it actually look like? Do we continue to keep it on two separate systems? Or do we have one system that supports both the water and the sewer utilities? And then what's the overall cost associated with this? And so we went through a pretty laborious exercise on the staff side, identified the technology platform that we want to use moving forward for both the water and the sewer utilities. With that planning exercise, we got a very high conceptual dollar amount of what it's going to cost to replace the entire SCADA system. And so the numbers are proposed in your budget number are those high-level dollars associated with replacing the entire SCADA system. I will say that those numbers are very, very large, but they're conceptual. So in 2019, we have money set aside to hire a consultant, because we don't have the technical expertise on staff to actually come in and design the system. So in 2019, you'll see a team come in, design the system, actually put together a refined engineer's estimate, a construction cost that we will come back to in 2019 with an updated number that then we can talk about a debt financing scenario. The SCADA system is obsolete. It's, there are cybersecurity concerns. There is risk concerns that we need to address it. We've taken, through Mike and his team's help, we've done some short-term measures to sort of bridge us to where we are today. But we are at a point where we need to replace the system to continue to operate our two utilities. With that, Councilor Weesentino's been part of those conversations. Mayor Burtland's been part of those conversations with the Utility Board. It's not, it's not an exciting topic, but it's a really, really important topic for the operations and maintenance of our systems.
Dave?
Just because I always sometimes say things in the negative, I'll say I, you've heard me say this before. I think this is a great investment, and it lasts a long time. And I frankly, I don't know how you guys do what you do today, because you somehow use your spidey senses to detect that a sewer pump is dead in the water somewhere where you have to take a boat to it. So, you know, when, you know, when do you bring up risk a lot? And I think that's absolutely the right thing to key in on. And when we don't have any idea that a sewer pump has jammed on a diaper and it's right next to a $10 million house, that is a risk that gets us into deep financial trouble very quickly. So this, to me, as an insurance policy, is, is great. And I just wanted to say, you guys have been so thorough and so careful about how you've figured this, the answer to this equation out, knowing that there are not zillions of dollars to spend. So just super appreciative for like the process that you've gone through and how, now that it's come to us, it's like a very predictable, like, oh, we all know what that's about. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
Except, Dunson.
I just want to say kudos to our Utility Board, because I think you get a lot of expertise there from people in the field that absolutely know that stuff inside and out. So kudos for you for bringing those people together and working through the numbers and the math and the complicated engineering that goes into all this. So amen. Well done. I second Dave.
The Utility Board gets all the glamorous stuff.
Okay, I'm going to take us home. Last few slides. Literally, no. Okay, outstanding bonds. This relates to parks and buildings. And this is important in terms of identifying when money that is used, tax money, to fund the annual debt service gets freed up. Now, the fire station and fire rescue truck, that debt, the last year of that is 2021. That's also the last year of the Levy-Lidlift, which is the funding source for the annual debt service. So there's no benefit. Once that ends, the funding source also goes away. However, South Mercer Playfields, the annual debt service is only $88,000 and change, but the last year of that is 2022. The funding source is sales tax from the general fund. So it frees up a little bit of money there, beginning then.
Sorry, but...
Yes.
There's also a sinking fund associated with that. Because is that the turf element or is that...
No. This, this was, we issued debt for a combination of the South Mercer Playfields and the Sewer Lake Line. It was a $10 million or so bond issue. This was a fairly small, a smaller piece of that, and so...
What did we actually buy of the South Mercer? What did, what did we do there?
Wasn't this the turf?
It was the turf. So there is a sinking fund, so we don't need to worry. Because then, once, once this is retired, there's a sinking fund that will cover the replacement of the turf if and when needed.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the community center, the building, that debt was, had been refunded, but it's, it's the annual debt service is about $138,000. Its final year is 2023. The funding source for that is REIT. And Francie's already taken that into account in the six-year CIP.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I know you've told me this before, so it's just my advanced age that's hurting me. What do we do to the, to the community center on an annual basis? That's so expensive for my, on a capital standpoint.
We built it.
It's, that's, sorry.
Isn't that, that's the debt service on the...
Is that the debt service on the whole building?
Debt service on the building.
Got it. Sorry.
No worries. Okay, we have one budget policy change as it relates to CIP. And this has been a longstanding policy where REIT is split 50/50. Then remember, there's two components to REIT. REIT 1, the first quarter percent, and REIT 2, the second quarter percent. REIT 1 has fewer strings attached to it by comparison. REIT 2 is more constrained. REIT cannot be used for technology nor equipment. What we're proposing is, in terms of balancing the various funding needs, is reducing the REIT for the street fund. So total REIT that gets 45% beginning in 19, and the balance of 55% would go to the Capital Improvement Fund. Okay? Now, that, I'm sure begs the question, does that negatively impact the street fund? For the coming six-year period, its fund balancers are fine. Yes, they decline over time, but the street fund, there's no impact on planned projects in the coming six-year period. The fund balance is fine at the end of the six-year period. We have a greater funding need on the Capital Improvement Fund side, where we're using a portion of that, or in 19 and 20, we're using the REIT increase dedicating it to the Open Space Vegetation Management Project due to the prevailing wage issue, okay? But after 2020, so the remaining four years of the CIP, that's needed for public buildings and other parks projects. I sense questions?
Chip, I, and I, it's, one of your early slides, we are showing the street fund being fully, no deficits. And so do those numbers for the street fund reflect this?
Yes.
Change in the allocation?
Yeah, the budget that's before you assumes this change.
I see. Thank you.
A question also, the, the street fund. If we were to find, a future council were to find themselves in a situation where for some reason there were insufficient funds, they still have the...
Vehicle license fee.
Yes, thank you.
Could increase it by another $20.
Really $20 per vehicle.
That's $375,000 a year.
Can we use any REIT for that Prose Plan that Jesse so desperately needs?
Sorry, we can't. I wish we could. That's one of the things I want the legislature to do is to remove some of the restrictions on REIT 1 and REIT 2. I'm not the only one. Many other cities want that. Just open it up to planning and technology and equipment and maintenance.
I think we get to hit that one in our legislative priorities, yeah. Put an extra star.
Questions on this? Okay. Guess what? We've reached the end, and so I, I got my notes. Julie has her notes. Francie has her notes. I think we had, know with the follow-up, in terms of what you want to revisit on the November 20th, beyond what Julie mentioned on, on the discussion with Mike in terms of arranging for meetings with council members who are interested to talk about the network connectivity and the fiber project in particular, we'll provide that more information directly.
Vegetue management.
Vegetation management.
2019. Looking at how we handle 2019, given all the unknowns.
Yeah.
So just for fun, and since we've talked about it before, do you want to talk about the plans for replacing the maintenance building or lack thereof?
Sure. And so Francie, we have a little bit of design money in the out years. It goes to 2024, 2024. But there is no ability to fund the replacement of that building in the coming six-year period. We just have the design money. As I've mentioned to the council before, options include, maybe not the best of options, when the fire station Levy-Lidlift ends in 2021, there's the potential to go back out to the public for various funding for capital projects. I don't know that the maintenance center would rise to the top, right? In terms of getting public support, because there's other needs that are out there. I should also mention that in terms of funding... REIT for the street fund. So total REIT, that gets 45% beginning in 19, and the balance of 55% would go to the Capital Improvement Fund. Okay? Now, that, I'm sure begs the question, does that negatively impact the street fund? For the coming six-year period, its fund balances are fine. Yes, they decline over time, but the street fund, there's no impact on planned projects in the coming six-year period. The fund balance is fine at the end of the six-year period. We have a greater funding need on the Capital Improvement Fund side where we're using a portion of that, or in 19 and 20, we're using the REIT increase dedicating it to the open space vegetation management project due to the prevailing wage issue. Okay? But after 2020, so the remaining four years of the CIP, that's needed for public buildings and other parks projects. I sense questions?
Chip, and I, it's one of your early slides when you're showing the street fund being fully, no deficits. And so do those numbers for the street fund reflect this?
Yes.
Change in the allocation?
Yeah, the, the budget that's before you assumes this change.
I see, thank you.
Question also, the, the street fund, if we were to find, a future council were to find themselves in a situation where for some reason there were insufficient funds, they still have the...
Vehicle license fee.
Yes, thank you.
Could increase it by another $20.
Another $20 per vehicle.
That's $375,000 a year.
Can we use any REIT for that pros pant, plan that Jesse so desperately needs?
Sorry, we can't. I wish we could. That's one of the things I want the legislature to do is to remove some of the restrictions on REIT 1 and REIT 2. I'm not the only one, many other cities want that. Just open it up to planning and technology and equipment and maintenance.
I think, I think we get to hit that one in our legislative priorities, yeah. Put, put an extra star.
Questions on this? Okay. Guess what? We've reached the end. And so I, I got my notes, Julie has her notes, Francie has her notes. I think we had, know with the follow-up, in terms of what you want to revisit on the November 20th, beyond what Julie mentioned on, on the discussion with Mike in terms of arranging for meetings with council members who are interested to talk about the network connectivity and the fiber project in particular, we'll provide that more information directly.
The D management?
Vegetation management.
2019? Looking at how we handle 2019 given all the unknowns.
Yeah.
So just for fun, and since we've talked about it before, do you want to talk about the plans for replacing the maintenance building or lack thereof?
Sure. And so Francie, we have a little bit of design money in the out years, are we close to 2024? 2024. But there is no ability to fund the replacement of that building in the coming six-year period. We just have the design money. As I've mentioned to the council before, options include, maybe not the best of options, when the fire station Lebby-Lidliff ends in 2021, there's the potential to go back out to the public for various funding for capital projects. I don't know that the maintenance center would rise to the top, right, in terms of getting public support because there's other needs that are out there. I should also mention that in terms of funding, if, if we ever do go forward on that project, the utility rates would fund 50% of the cost, the balance had to be funded by taxes. And so that's where you look for opportunities for surplus REIT because a $100 million property is sold or that kind of thing, for example. I will also mention a Plan B, I've mentioned this to the deputy mayor, and I think maybe a few others. But a Plan B is, remember, we have a service package we talked about at the operating budget review, where we're looking at certain departments. One of them is the municipal court. And would it make sense to contract with City of Kirkland or some other agency, right, for court services? So thereby freeing up the, the physical space of the court and to help solve some of our space problems. And that would buy us time. And so that's out there as a possibility that we're looking at as well. Any other information needs for the council? Any other questions? Okay, folks. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, so... We now, in theory, have the vast majority or the majority of information that we need as we approach November 20th, which was actually when decision-making time hits for both operating and for the capitals. So obviously, we have an important night tomorrow night, Wednesday morning, I think we'll all need to be pulling out our books and figuring out what that means. So with that, the next item of business is AB 5496, which is the draft 2019 state legislative priorities. And for that, I believe Julie will be talking us through. Oh, Ally?
She punted. I mean, she assigned me this.
She gave it to the person with the greatest competition handle matter in front.
So we don't have a formal presentation for you this evening, but we do have the actual document up here on the screen. What we're looking for tonight is feedback on the categories that we have presented, as well as if there's any information within here that you have heartache with, would like removed, or would like added. And then we will be bringing this back to you on November 20th on the consent calendar for adoption. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Counsel, any discussion? I think what I would point out is we have the council's legislative priorities, and I think Wendy made a great point, it was probably now almost two months ago, insofar as really bringing it down to that which we as a council wanted to focus on, that we as a council felt that we could influence and that it would notably impact our community. There's clearly some that impact those beyond the island, but we wanted to make sure that our efforts and energies would actually have a tangible, would have tangible ramifications for our residents. Also, in this packet, we have a number of other documents, which includes the Sound Cities Draft Association, or Sound Cities Draft 2019 Agenda, we have ETP, we have King County Cities, and AWC, et cetera. The only one that I think where we would be taking feedback is ETP. I think Benson, are you done with Sound Cities?
Yeah.
Okay. And everyone else, I think we've already had our window of opportunities. So in front of us is really what the cities' alleged priorities are. And then if anybody has any comments about ETP, I'm happy to take those either here or offline. So any, any comments, council members? Or Ally, you want to?
I'll just...
Yeah.
Well, I'll just say that I came a little late to this party because you'd had a previous conversation about these, I believe. And I was pleased with what I saw here and am ready to give it a thumbs up.
I do want to give Councilmember Wong some credit. He did rework the original draft that we had emailed out to you and added in number four and number five to call out more specifically health and property tax requirements for seniors, veterans, and disabled residents. So thank you, Councilmember Wong.
And that's relating to the legislation?
Yes.
Okay. Senate Bill 6251. All right, well, with that amount of robust feedback, Ally, anything you want to add?
No, I was just going to say, if you're happy with them and you don't have changes, we could just adopt them tonight.
We could just have a motion.
So it's up to you.
So Bruce, this is for you. Number six, if 1631 passes, or how does, how do these priorities affect those change that Mike or... Does council support at 1631?
Council has supported 1631. 6A is a statewide price on carbon with a reinvestment of a substantial portion of revenues into an effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is in alignment with 1631, I believe. And so I, I don't, I, I think all is well was my impression of this and looking at that. Are you thinking there might, might be something you want to do that's sort of an if then, if 1631?
Right, so if 1631 passes, is there more specific work in this area that we want to do? Or just leave it because we can assume the legislature could do it? Right, done. Legislature doesn't have to do anything. Is there anything more specific that the K4C wants to ask above and beyond or supplement or implement?
Certainly, I mean, certainly the K4C has a bunch of other information that's here. But I think, my, my impression was that this does a pretty good job in B, C, D, and E of capturing those other objectives that the K4C is, is looking to. So it's, you know, the, the clean, the reduced carbon fuel standard, it's the ending coal as a power source as early as possible. And so I think this does a pretty good job of capturing those things. Is there something you're thinking it might be missing here? Because there might be, but I...
There may or there may not be, and I know you like to have that, I know our mayor likes to have that flexibility to sign on to letters that may or may not be very specific, so...
Councilmember Weicher, the first sentence, the second sentence of that, it says, "We encourage legislation and partnerships that support progressive clean energy, climate protection, or other environmental health measures to achieve the following." We could, you know, including, you know, not limited to, but including the following. I think, you know, our communications and sustainability manager, Ross Freeman, spent a good deal of time taking the K4C agenda and kind of reducing it down into these specific five issues. Buckets, yes. But we could make that statement at the top a little more broad if...
I'll just leave it, I just wanted to ask the question.
Well, the, the good news is, is the vote is tomorrow night, and I misspoke, we actually don't need a motion. This is actually just direction for any modifications, and it comes back to us, I believe, probably on consent.
Yes, and I was just saying that if you don't have any changes and you don't want to further make changes, we can just adopt tonight. So you could just make a motion.
I guess, well, I wouldn't encourage it because we would want it to stay on consent. If there's any brilliant ideas in the next week or so, you could always share them out.
Question on the, on the other end, which is, do we do anything to sort of gauge how effective our legislators have been at prosecuting our agenda? Do we get a...
Well, I think there's an indirect, if you, there's a results of like our 2018 in here, but you mean if we look at Rep. 1, Rep. 2, Senate position, and individually score them? That I haven't seen, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how we would do it.
I, we did try to provide at least some summary of the last session and how successful we were. I think another opportunity, we started this last year when I came aboard, but the visit that we have with the 41st delegation, I find those helpful in them highlighting what they have achieved. They're very aware of your priorities, and we will have an opportunity to meet with them on November 26th. So that's another, I think, a place where we can hear from them how successful they think they were in the last session, and then what they think are the priorities going into the next session. There's no like report card concept out there that I'm aware of.
And we are also doing this earlier so that we're not giving our final draft to our legislators in January. We're giving it to them in November, and we'll actually get to sit and discuss it with them on November 26th.
I, just in partial response to, to Dave, I would just say, looking at the letter that we got from Washdop, for example, there was, I think, woven, this letter represents some tremendous work that our legislators have gone to bat for us, particularly on the, this parcel 12 issue.
And if there is no objection, I mean, it would save us actually staff time if you would consider it.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that one of the things that, in talking to our delegation, they've said is the earlier the better. And if we, if we have the comfort level tonight, I would, I would make a motion. Okay. Well, I move to adopt Agenda Bill 5496.
Then first and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That was a very efficient move. Cool. Thanks, Ally, and thank you Benson for, for working on that and untangling that. That's great. So we now move to other business. Any upcoming council member absences to report?
Oh, it won't be the one this week I'm traveling.
So reminder, we have school board Thursday night.
In fact, we will be able to share with them your newly adopted legislative priorities since that is on the agenda.
Will they have theirs?
Not, not that I'm aware of, yeah.
All right. So with that, we then move to the planning schedule.
As you mentioned, we have a joint meeting with the school board. We're talking about their budget, our budget, our legislative priorities. And they would also like to update us on their facilities and transportation plan. And then we want to just update you on some of the staff-to-staff work that's progressed in, in the area of inclusive community, welcoming community. So we'd like to just update you on that. And there's some work that still needs to be done on that, but really start to get your thoughts about how to move that effort forward. So those are the agenda items. We're meeting here at 4:45, and we have to wrap up by 6:00 since they have a board meeting. So that item, and then... Do they? Deb just told me that you should have your packets for that meeting on the dais available to you. And then I think one thing to note is you are hosting Representative Judy Cleburne on November 26th, a reception to really honor her. And she is retiring. And so in advance of your meeting with the 41st delegation, some, from 5:30 to 6:30, we invite the public to come out and share their appreciation to Representative Cleburne.
Okay.
If we could, I know, I can't remember, since I've been gone for a while, somehow, in some fashion, I was informed that former mayor, former Senator Fred Jarrett was hoping to be here and probably say a few words at that. It'd be good if we made sure that we sent out invitations to former electeds like that.
Ally's been working on it.
Good, folks who, who worked with Judy in particular, because I think for them, it'll be particularly nice to, you know, be able to, you know, sort of close out that career and have things to say.
We will have a loose program, so we are looking for folks to make remarks. So that's a good one. And if you know of others that you think would love to be part of the program, let us know.
Yeah, like I say, particularly folks who, who served around the same time she served on council and would be great.
Okay. So with that, we have no board appointments this evening, and we'll move to council member reports. So we'll start at this end. Nothing? Benson?
I just mentioned that it's passed already, but the Mursong Schools Foundation had their two-day phone-a-thon. I don't know how successful it was, but they had a lot of volunteers. And what was interesting is that they actually had a number of high school students who were making phone calls, and I think that went pretty well. I will also say that the PIC, the Public Issues Committee, they're having a pre-PIC meeting this Wednesday on social media and how elected officials might want to interact with social media, Nextdoor and Facebook and what have you. So I will bring back whatever guidance or any other tips that they might share. And Bruce, I think you are the one who put that little bug in their ear, that's all. Okay, all right.
Back just in time.
Yeah. Great, okay.
Social media is having a significant impact on public confidence in elected officials, and for us to be sharing best practices as cities and trying to figure out how it's being best handled is, I think, a valuable conversation for us to be having.
And so Saleem, Bruce, tell us about your river rafting trip.
The, the Grand Canyon is very nice at this time of year.
Okay, Dave? On my part, just a couple of words. First of all, thanks to those of you who quickly chimed in in support of the statement that we put out on behalf of the families, victims, and those who are suffering from the tragedy in Pittsburgh. I'll be moderating a DNI panel for the Enterprise Risk Forum this week, which should be interesting. And if you could all please send and/or confirm to me the boards and commissions that you applied for from Sound Cities. So thank you, Benson, I have yours. That would be great. I don't think we had any conflicts, but otherwise, that is it. So with that, council adjourned. 9:05.